Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. To get started, I'd like to call upon Reverend Rodney Newman, a chaplain of Oklahoma City University, for our invocation. Please stand, and after that, I'd ask Councilman Skip Kelly to lead us in the flag.
Shall we pray? "O God, as we feel the chill struggle to enter into the air, we know that we are in a season of transition when uncertainty and change abound. It reminds us that our lives are in transition as well. Some among us know personal pain of loss and disappointment. All of us feel the tension of uncertainty in our political and economic worlds. So today we come to say thank you for life and health, for freedom and its responsibilities, for our city, its leaders, and its staff. And we come to say please, grant our leaders wisdom and guidance, strength and courage. Enable all of us to see each other with compassion. Make us restless with mediocrity. Cause us to keep reaching, keep learning, keep hoping for an even greater community. Amen."
... To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we want to turn off the mayor's chair?
No, you are voting as may.
Okay. I'll turn over. Okay. Now, we are privileged this morning, from time to time, as you may know, we have the opportunity to get a sneak preview of something that the OCU Music School is doing. And this morning, we have Tyler Whitley, who's going to do something from Light in the Piazza, and then afterwards, she's going to tell us a little bit about our opportunity to get tickets and attend the performance out there. So Tyler, when you're ready, we're anxious to look forward to hearing your performance. Just as a little bit of trivia, Light in the Piazza was done in New York a couple of years ago, and another OCU graduate was the star, Kelly O'Hara, in the production that took place in New York. So this is a real opportunity for people in Oklahoma City to get a taste of what a great OCU graduate did in New York.
(Music) 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 (Music)
Thank you. Light in the Piazza plays at Oklahoma City University in the Kirkpatrick Auditorium. And it runs September 24th and 25th at 8:00 PM and September 26th at 3:00 PM. Tickets are now on sale for $12, $18, and $25, and you can call the ticket office at 208-5227 or visit us online at okcu.edu/ticketoffice. Gentlemen, this is a great date night musical. Bring your wives and tell them to bring a box of tissues. Thank you. (Applause) 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 The first proclamation we have this morning (Applause) 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 Is in recognition of the Community Health Centers Incorporated and their National Health Start Association to reduce the incidence mortality, and this is a way to make people aware of it. And I'd like to call the people up here now who are going to receive this proclamation. And would the clerk go ahead and please read the proclamation?
Whereas Central Oklahoma Healthy Start Initiative, healthy babies begin before birth. A service site of Community Health Centers Incorporated has been designed by the National Healthy Start Association to reduce the incidence of infant mortality. And whereas Central Oklahoma Healthy Start is increasing our communities' awareness of the high rate of infant deaths in Oklahoma County in the 2010 campaign. Celebrate Day 366, Every Baby Deserves a Chance, is well underway to help battle the overwhelming odds. And whereas each year about 400 babies born in Oklahoma County do not live to see their first birthday, statistics show the national infant mortality rate in 2007 was 6.75 deaths per 1,000 live births, and the rate for Oklahoma in 2007 was 8.52 deaths per 1,000 live births. Whereas premature birth, low birth weight, and shorter gestation periods account for more than 60% of U.S. infant deaths, and the infant mortality rates among African-Americans, Hispanics, and Native Americans are significantly higher than those of non-Hispanic wives. Whereas Central Oklahoma Healthy Start Initiative works to eliminate the racial and ethnic disparities in infant mortality, and this continuum of care extends beyond the welfare of newborns to include mothers, fathers, and whole families. Now therefore, Nick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim September 2010 as Infant Mortality Awareness Month in Oklahoma City, and he commends Central Oklahoma Healthy Start Initiative for their efforts to reduce infant mortality rates in Oklahoma County.
Well, let's show our appreciation for this worthwhile effort. (Applause) Now, thank you for all you do. (Applause) 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 (Applause)
My name is Janice Williams, and I'm the consumer advocate at Central Oklahoma Healthy Start. In 2009, in Oklahoma County, 119 infants died. Died in 2009. So our goal at Central Oklahoma Healthy Start is to reduce that infant mortality rate. That was just in Oklahoma County. We provide case management, outreach and recruitment, health education, interperceptive care, and depression screening and referral services. On September 30th, we're going to hold a vigil and remembrance of those 119 deaths at Frederick Douglass Boulevard. So I would like to say on behalf of Central Oklahoma Healthy Start, we greatly appreciate this proclamation from the city of Oklahoma City.
Thank you very much, and the work you do is so important, and I congratulate you for your efforts. Would you like to introduce your colleagues?
Yes. I'll let them introduce themselves. My name is Wanda Williams, and I'm an outreach coordinator and deputy coordinator.
My name is Juanita Porter, and I'm the program coordinator.
My name is Greg Rogers, and I'm case manager and work with the county.
Again, thank you.
Thank you all. Let's one more time show our appreciation for your efforts. (Applause) Good welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for coming this morning. And we have a second proclamation to read this morning, and would the ladies please come up who are going to? Thank you. And they've got a technically challenged person. Here we have another microphone. Anyway, would the ladies please come up, and I will ask the clerk to begin reading their proclamation as they come up.
Whereas September 17th, 2010, marks the 223rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. Whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Nick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim September 17th through 23th as Constitution Week in Oklahoma City, and he asks all citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering the lost rights may never be regained.
Thank you. Let's show our appreciation for the work these ladies are doing to bring this attention. (Applause) In this somewhat troubled times our country's going through, I think nothing can be more important than recognizing our roots and the value of the Constitution. Would you like to introduce yourself and your group and say a few words?
Yes. My name is Pat Towns. We have Joyce Hill, Joanne Winters, and Fay Marv. Sorry. We are all members of a Daughters of the American Revolution chapter. The Daughters have been celebrating this week since 1955 or before, I think, but at least since 1955, when the president issued the proclamation. In case you don't know about DAR, we are a lineage-based group who is a women's service organization, and we promote historic preservation, patriotism, and education. So we thank you very much for having this opportunity.
Well, thank you very much for what you're doing. Let's just one more time show our appreciation for your efforts. (Applause) You hear copy of the proclamation? Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Good luck. Good to meet you now. (Applause) 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 All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The next item on our agenda is the receive the Journal of the Council Proceedings for August 31st, 2010, and approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for August 17th, 2010. We have a motion made in second to approve and receive these two items. Please cast your votes, and the item is received. Thank you. Item five on the agenda is a request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I have a couple this morning. On the concurrent docket, concurrent docket, on page 19 and 20, items 7A, B, and C, I'd ask that they be stricken, they have not yet been to the Devon Implementation Committee or the Economic Development Trust. So we got a little ahead of ourselves on this one, trying to be efficient and push it through, but we didn't get all the steps yet, so we'd like to strike those and go through those two committees and bring it back in a future meeting. And then on to page 23, under items 8H1, 2504 South Olly, item A, we ask that that be stricken, the owner's removed. And on page 24, under 8J1E, 5709 Empire Boulevard, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item H, 1118 North Purdue, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item K, 1211 Northwest 77th Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner secured. And item N, 1600 Northwest 16th Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured.
Thank you. Jim, are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? Hearing none, we will recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, and we have several items under that first. Have a motion made in second to move all the items. Are there any questions or discussions on these items? If not, please cast your votes, and the item is approved. We'll adjourn the Municipal Facilities Authority and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, and there are several items in this item as well. Motion made in second, is any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes, and the items are approved. We'll adjourn the OCPPA now and reconvene as the Oklahoma City Council again with the consent docket. And are there any items on the consent docket?
(Inaudible)
Okay, now I asked my question properly. Are there any items for individual consideration?
R and AF.
R and AF. Okay, Gary, looks like you're the only one, R and AF. Why don't you start with it? Councilman McAtee, I'm sorry.
Yeah, BK and AD.
BK and AD. Okay. Gary, since I asked you to start, why don't you go ahead now with R?
Just a quick comment. This is the award of contract for the rehabilitation of the old Route 66 bridge out at Lake Overholster. This project's been on the planning stages for quite a while, and if I'm not mistaken, it's the last of the 2,000 bonds, is that not right, Jim?
That's correct.
So, but it's been a long time coming. I know that's with all the emphasis on Route 66 and all of that, that's going to be a welcome addition out there, and I'm glad to see that coming. And on AF, just a quick question. This is starting the widening stuff for Willshire Boulevard, and I'd love to see that coming on, but my question is, Willshire being a section line road, do we not already have easements wide enough to put a four-lane road in? Because we're doing a lot of payments to get easements. I thought on section line roads, we had enough easements already.
Station right away at 66 feet, and that's not adequate with everything to get in your full four-lane road, and so we do have to acquire additional right-of-way to put in a four-lane road.
Okay.
And depending on grades and utilities and what's all going out there, but oftentimes that is inadequate to get utilities, hit the slopes that need to be done, and put in the four-lane road.
Okay. That's all, ma'am.
Larry, you've got two items.
Just thank you, Your Honor. On AD, I see Dennis Crowers here. This particular item accepts some temporary easements dealing with the I-40 and Morgan Road interchange, but I think there's a big day coming on the 16th. Would you share that with our viewers?
Yes, that's correct. This Thursday, the 16th, is the day that ODOT will accept bids on that project, so we look forward to that going forward.
This has been a long, long time for our folks out there. That was the first call I had when I became a councilman, the I-40 and Morgan Road interchange, and so this Thursday, ODOT will be letting the bids for the construction to begin on that.
Yes, they'll receive bids on the 16th and probably award a contract in October.
Thank you, sir. And then a question for Mr. Jordan, sorry to hit you with this, on BK.
Yes.
This particular resolution is all in accord with the city charter which governs this kind of thing?
Yes.
And how many, Jim, meetings are we at right now that the gentleman has missed? He's at four.
Four.
And so this extends that, what, indefinitely? For this particular tour?
For this particular tour, yes.
Okay. But it's all in accord with the provisions of the charter?
You can grant him consent to miss more than four consecutive meetings, and there's a state statute that appears to apply and protect his status as a council member while he's on active or inactive duty with the military.
Thank you, sir.
I understand Councilman Kelly has a comment on V?
Yes. I was wondering if I could get Dennis to give me a little bit of an update as relates to V on the Northeast 23rd Street, streetscape and waterline improvement.
Which item are you referring to, Councilman?
V.
V?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Being vigorous, a change order, Dennis, on?
Yeah, that project is basically completed, and this is just a cleanup item.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Are there any comments about the consent docket? If not, we're ready to vote. Please cast your ballots, and the item carries. Nobody can leave. Okay, we'll move on to the concurrent docket, and there are a number of items in the concurrent docket.
Move the items to the head first.
We have a motion made in second. Any questions or comments on the items on the concurrent docket? All right, please cast your votes, and the concurrent docket is passed. Now we're moving on to section eight, items requiring separate votes, and the first is a public hearing and resolution dealing with the assessment role for the Oklahoma City Stockyards Improvement District. Is anybody signed up to speak on this one?
No, but I understand some of them. Could you say?
Okay. This item, item A, under section eight, is a public hearing and a resolution for adopting and confirming the assessment role the year 2010/11 for the Stockyards City Business Improvement District, Oklahoma City Improvement Special Services Assessment District Number One.
I would move the item.
A motion made in second. Is there anybody who has, would you like to say something like this? I understand we had a person who was wanting to speak on it. If not, please cast your votes, and the item is approved. Thank you. Now, do we need to do B separately?
Yes, we need to do B separately, and the House will need to.
Okay. B is a related item, adopting and ratifying the assessment role, and we also asked for the emergency on this one.
I'd move the item.
We have a motion made in second. Further discussion? Please cast your ballots, and the item is approved. Now for the emergency?
Move emergency.
We have a motion made in second for the emergency. Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes, and the emergency's approved. Now, do we have to do C separately?
C is the public.
Okay, so we don't have to vote on that?
Yes, we have any votes.
We have any voting on it, okay. We have to vote on item C, I've been corrected, and that is a public hearing on this issue?
Now, C is related actually to a different ordinance regarding the petty cash procedure that was presented the last time to city council meeting, and it's an ordinance that was presented regarding making sure we have policies in place for the city clerk's office regarding petty cash.
I apologize for that. It is a separate issue. It's a public hearing related to petty cash fund. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this particular issue? Is this a public hearing?
(Inaudible).
We have a motion made in second. Is there any further discussion? Please cast your votes, and item C is approved. Item 8D1 is a public hearing regarding the ordinance relating to zoning and planning code, amending Chapter 59 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code 2007, Section, Chapter amending Chapter 59 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code 2007, Section, Chapter 59, Article 4, Section 242, 50.4, concerning historical preservation review procedures.
Mr. Mayor, Items D1 and D2 both are in regard to historic preservation changes to the process. We had a presentation at the last council meeting by Russell Clausen regarding to the changes that are being proposed and staff stands ready to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anybody here who would like to comment on Items D1 or 2? Any questions, because we have staff here prepared to answer it?
No.
Okay. We're voting on Item D1. We have a motion made in second. Please cast your votes. Item D1 is approved. Now, we're, Item D2 is a public hearing relating to the same sort of things.
Move.
We have a motion made in second.
We do have a citizen on E.
On E?
Yeah.
We're voting on Item D2 right now.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we're just, don't confuse me now, please. Okay, Item D2, we have a motion and second. Please cast your votes and Item D2 is approved. Item E is a public hearing regarding an ordinance relating to the general schedule of fees, amending Chapter 60 Oklahoma City Municipal Code regarding sanitary sewer and water usage charges. And we have one person signed up to speak, Debbie Bohannon. And if you'll give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure.
And could you maybe a little more specific on your address, just for the record purposes?
1920 Northwest 31st is one block from Penn and one block from Northwest 31st. 30th, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Sam, sorry, is Sam? He's my representative. I want some clarity on this first. Is this not a proposal to raise increases for residents on our water uses? It is. Okay, that's in the breakdown of great legal briefs, I had to verify that. I just want to present as a fast approaching senior who would like to retire and be able to live on what I've got, that these rate increases affect us most vulnerable who don't have the resources that, who working yet, people still have. And it appears that all the utilities have gone this way, that there's a flat rate and regardless of what your usage of that particular utility is, you're stuck with that rate increase. And it's, I've noticed it on my gas bill. If I use no gas during the summer, I still pay $20 for that meter being out there. And on a limited budget, that's tough. Same with the water. If I shower once a week, I lose my friends and I still have to pay $40 a month just to have the water meter in. So I'm urging you and begging you not to do this. The reason being, Oklahoma City itself has more resources than any other business in this state. Those of us residents that are not involved in politics, like, this is just wondering why you can't turn a profit with what you've got so that it's not put back on the taxpayers? Why do we have to bumper those cost increases? I notice you've got scores and scores of just monolithic projects going on. And I understand your desire to see Oklahoma City become world renowned and beautiful and that's great, if you can do it with what you've got to work with. But don't keep coming back to us because our services are cut. If I see a pack of dogs coming down my street, it takes four days to get an animal control officer out there to round up the dogs that are obviously long gone by then. If I park three inches on my grass, somebody comes up and gives me a ticket from the Neighborhood Action Committee. But if I have my purse snatched like I did in June, I can't get any resolution. Now I've got to go for years wondering about identity theft. I paid hundreds to get all my identification cards replaced, change all the locks on my house. So I'm just pleading with you as a citizen who lives here and who would like to live here without feel like I'm enslaved to cost increases, that use the resources you've got to raise more money instead of putting it on our backs. That's what I have to say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bohannon. We appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on this Section E?
Just a follow-up on her comment. Mayor, this is just the second communication I've got from someone or two. I thought I'd hear from more. I did hear from another individual and this being the second. Unless other council people are being unindated with calls, and I haven't heard they have, I think for a large measure, people have recognized that for the price that we are paying and the good quality of water that we're getting and where we stand in terms of water rates and other communities, we're doing very well. And I think it's been how long since the last rate increase?
Actually, we did raise the rates last October, so this is the beginning of a new series of water rate increases.
And this is a three-year?
Four-year.
Incremental.
You know, the Water Utilities Trust is a standalone entity, so that it, the revenues that come in from your water bill are used to pay for the operations of the water plant and the wastewater operations only. They don't, the money isn't used for any other city operations. It's only to provide those services provided for water and wastewater. And I think that the Water Utilities Trust and the city has been fairly prudent in only raising rates when necessary. I think they don't take rate increases lightly and never have because of the impact that it does make to our citizens and to our businesses out there. And we want to make sure that we are a competitive place to be, in a place that's good to do business. You know, recently KPMG rated Oklahoma City as the cheapest place in the country to do business.
It's also lowest rates.
I'm sorry?
It's also lowest rates.
Could well be, but the fact of the matter is, we do have cheap utilities in Oklahoma City. Electrical rates are cheap, water utilities are overall very cheap. And these rate increases will be used to be put back into the utility to keep that system up and ready. You don't, it would be, you want to make sure that you don't underfund your utilities and have your water treatment plants breaking down and the water mains not being regularly replaced and the sewer lines, you know, collapsing and causing backups into people's houses. And there's a fine line amongst having the revenues needed to keep those facilities up and still keeping the rates as low as we possibly can. And I know it's a difficult thing that we deal with on a regular basis.
I would just like to point out, in the context of recession, many of us are facing the cost of that, and we can't afford any more electricity because there are tremendous problems everywhere. Because I'm just suggesting, if you've got sufficient resources, find another way to raise that debt.
Do we have a motion in second on this? Okay, we need a motion and a second to continue the public hearing.
I'm moving through.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes and the public hearing goes on. Item 8F is an ordinance to be introduced for public hearing September 28th and the final adoption on October 12th relating to personnel retirement systems. Jim, would you like to say a little bit about this?
Renee Hutton's here and she's going to explain the changes that are being proposed this morning.
Renee Hutton, with the retirement system, I wanted to let you know that the modifications to the average final compensation are just a clarification of the ordinance. This has been the current practice for at least the last 30 years. But we just wanted to clarify the ordinance. When the actual discussion came up about possible furloughs, people were talking about how this would affect their average final comp. And it didn't affect, so we wanted to actually put that in the ordinance because that is our practice, not to have it affect any time off without pay. And then the changes to 4086 are minimum distribution requirements that are required by the Internal Revenue Service as part of our qualified plan status.
We might be appropriately categorizing these as sort of housekeeping kind of things, a cleanup language. And this particular item just sets it for public hearing on the 28th of September and final adoption on October 12th. Any other, we have a motion made in second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Please cast your votes and the item is approved. Item G, 8G, is an ordinance to be introduced and set for public hearing September 28th and a final adoption October 12th relating to the general schedule of fees pertaining to parks, recreation, cultural events, et cetera.
Mr. Mayor, if you recall, during the budget process, there was some discussion regarding the Fish Hatchery. And as a result of that, council directed staff to come back and take a look at both the fishing permits and the boating permits. And so we had a city manager report on that a few weeks ago. And this would be the first introduction of the ordinance to implement those. And Mr. Wittenhead will tell you exactly the processes we went through and where we are on those modifications.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, City Manager. Come before you today at your direction, having worked with the Game and Fish Commission regarding a change in both boating and fishing fees that per your direction might generate half or 50% of the proposed reduction that was in our budget for the operation of the Fish Hatchery. Of course, Fish Hatchery was funded, operating well, things are going well. But the Game and Fish Commission is recommending to you the increases that you see. And these increases, a daily fishing permit from 3 to 350, an annual fishing permit from 15 to 1850, a daily boating from 5 to 625, and an annual boating from 25 to 33 is projected to generate about $75,000, which is half of the proposed reduction of 150. Of course, a different number of permits are sold each year, but if the continuation of the current sales level does continue, then we generate about $75,000 in this change. Game and Fish gave a lot of consideration to this, and I think they recommend it to you with complete confidence. I'll try to answer any of your questions.
Wendell, how does it break down between the two? About how much, is about half of it come from fishing and the other half from boating?
Yes, sir. It was specifically crafted so that it would be about 50% or about 37.5 from each boating and 37.5 from fishing.
I would add, Mayor, I think the Game and Fish Commission, in their willingness to step forward and help find a solution to this, in the time that they took to work this out between fishing and boating, I think reflects some very modest increases with some pretty good rates that we had, annual rates, to arrive at this 50% of the funds we need to generate to keep the Fish Hatchery open. So I think with the modest increases, it's a very good step forward.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Wendell, just a quick question. Can we justify the increase in boating fees to attribute those fees to the cost of keeping the Fish Hatchery going? In other words, are there enough people who get boating fees that are actually fishing to justify that increase?
Of course, when someone gets a boating permit, we don't ask them nor do we have a way of exactly knowing how many boat permits we issue to someone who may fish or who may instead just boat and not fish. But there are a sizable number of boaters who are fishermen, a large number of boaters who do fish from their crafts on all of our lakes.
I think from an economic standpoint, it would probably easier to justify the boating fee increase generally because it hadn't been raised since 1989.
Quite a number of years.
So it's been 21 years since that fee's been increased. So the cumulative effect of 21 years of cost probably would be, make it simpler, I would think, to raise the boating fee.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Wendell, you believe that this is a resolution, I mean, this is a solution to the problem that we were faced with earlier this year as far as the budget with the Fish Hatchery?
It will certainly bring in more funds to the general fund, which is the funding source for the Fish Hatchery. These funds, as is the case with others, will go into the general fund and buoy up the general fund in such a manner that funding the Fish Hatchery could be less of a problem. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion made in second for the ordinance to be introduced and remind the public once again that a hearing, a public hearing will be held September 28th, 2010, here in the council. If they have additional comments they'd like to make, that would be an appropriate time for them to come forward and make those comments. Wendell, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion made in second to adopt the schedule that we've suggested here. Is there any further discussion or comments? Please cast your votes and the item's approved. We have sort of an unusual situation. We just received a notice that there was some comments that a lady wanted to make on the sections, Item 8A and B. We've already approved those, but I would give her, Mrs. Lee, an opportunity to say something if she's still here. 8A and B. It has to do with the property, the taxes on the stockyards. Now, we've already approved it, so your comments, we'd be glad to hear them, but they won't have an opportunity to change our votes, I'm afraid.
I don't want to talk.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Ms. Lee. Thank you for your interest. We appreciate you coming in. Okay, that will move us to Item 8. H is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on any item under H1, Section 8?
Move the item.
We have a motion made in second. Any further discussion or comments? Please cast your votes and the item's approved. Item 2 is a resolution declaring structures to be dilapidated and directing said structures to be torn down. Are there any comments or questions before we go on that one?
Move the item.
We have a motion made in second. All those in favor say aye. Pardon me, all of them, cast your votes. And the item carries. Item 8I1 is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures in the Historic Preservation District, Item A 100 Northwest 22nd and Item B 108 Northwest 22nd. And we have one person signed up to speak, Sherri Pemberton. Ms. Pemberton, if you'll give us your name and address for the record, please.
Aye.
And if you can, limit your comments to about three minutes or so. We appreciate that.
It's always hard for me. I own the home at 110 Northwest 22nd Street, right next door to 100 and 108 that you're suggesting be demolished. I'm a descendant of John Franklin Wynans through the lineage of Paul Edward Wynans and Cordelia Jane Norick Wynans. I am one of the many Wynans descendants living in the Oklahoma City area who understand John Franklin's purpose and hopes for the community when he donated property to the city known as Wynans Park, located on Broadway between 22nd Street and about 18th Street. On March 16th, 1910, at 1:45 PM, John Franklin Wynans and Corby Wynans deeded property to Oklahoma City to serve as a city park, subject to the following provisos and conditions. The object of this transfer is to convey the above described property to the city of Oklahoma City for park purposes only. The grantors herein specify that the control and management of the above described property conveyed for the purposes next herein before mentioned shall be exercised by the Board of Park Commissioners of Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, or the successors of the said board. The above property is conveyed subject to this further condition that the said tract of land shall be and always remain as one park and the name of the same shall always be Wynans Park. The above property is conveyed subject to this further condition that the same is to be laid out as a park, including grading, planting of grass, trees, shrubbery, flowers, and such other improvements as may be necessary to serve the purposes for a public park and shall be protected and maintained in accordance with advanced ideas of park landscaping. Further historic value at curiosity really is that it was notarized by W.F. Harn. Once the three properties have been demolished, what purpose will the vacant land serve in that particular area? And what will happen to Wynans Park? I can show you articles of snapshots of picnics which used to be held in Wynans Park not too long ago, where the firemen put on skits for the Children of Wynans Edition. I'd like to see that happen again. It has yet to be determined exactly what role those three buildings played in the 1920s when the neighborhood was originally developed. 108 Northwest 22nd Street next to me, to the east, is one of two things. It was either G.H. Nichols' contractor's office or it was the model home for Heritage Hill's smaller craftsmen's bungalows. Until the time when its purpose is determined, the buildings must remain intact, stable, and in repair to maintain their structural integrity lest they cause harm to anyone who might venture onto the properties. To demolish them would be historical sacrilege. One comment offered by HPC members in last week's meeting regarding dilapidated building status states, although 108 Northwest 22nd Street is in an advanced state of disrepair and deterioration, comparable structures have been successfully renovated. I am a perfect example of that. I raised the value of my home from a fixer-upper selling for $27.9 in 1995 to well over $100,000 now in 2010. And I did it $50 to $100 at a time and one weekend at a time when I was earning $8 an hour. Block 14 of Wynans Edition is not responsible for an irresponsible owner's community sins and omissions and should not have to pay for or forfeit any value of its own because of those oversights and failure to act. On the HPC agenda for the meeting held December 3rd, 2008, is a notation that Oklahoma City had received designation as a Preserve America community initiated by First Lady Laura Bush. Quote, "Preserve America communities have received this special designation for their dedication to historic preservation in all areas of community development. How many homes can we now tear down before we lose that designation? The three properties at the corner of Northwest 22nd and Broadway were solid, stable, single-family residences when purchased by its present owner in the early 1980s. And so now and into the future, they must be returned to estate, just as John Franklin Wynans envisioned them, standing as family homes in the Oklahoma City community and in the Wynans Edition." There's also a question I have about, if I go online into the county records, the quality is listed as fair. And it has been for many years. How can you tear down a property that is listed in fair quality? Condition, below average. Well, yeah, it's below average. So there are some things that just don't match here. And a lot of things haven't been resolved yet for these properties. Also, on July 27th, the present owner sold these properties. None of us were informed of that. The for sale signs are still out by a commercial agent. I called the agent and said I was interested in the properties. I am, I am interested in those properties. And he said, you know, they're zoned right now as residential, but there are things in the works to zone them commercial. But for now, they're zoned residential. That really concerned me. If those, if something is in the works to make those properties commercial, somebody's doing something that they're not sharing. And we on the block, Debbie Blackburn, former state representative, Bob Blackburn, executive director of the Historic Center, Bill and Edith Siemens, graphic artists at the History Center, head horticulturist at the zoo, their kids live on the block. This is a solid block. We are responsible homeowners and we have had to fight all these years to even find safety and security from those properties. We need them put back. We need them put back to what they were. They could, we could somehow, I don't know, we've talked about a walkover to the park for the kids. There are more and more young children in the neighborhood. We'd like to see them be able to go over and play in the park, put the flowers back in. It's not in a state of advanced landscape ideas. It needs to be brought back. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Pemberton. Charles, do you have any comments on these particular properties?
Of course, I'm just addressing the health and safety of the structures themselves. As you can see by the photos, they're in an advanced state of decay. They're in danger of collapse, and that's why their staff recommendation is that they be removed.
And in the event there is a zoning change out there, that would have to go to the planning commission for approval and review, and then ultimately come to the city council.
Yes, that'd be correct.
And to your knowledge, has there been any effort to change that zoning out there?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you, Charles. Are there any other comments?
What options do we have? Do we really have an option? I mean, is there any way we can force this owner to fix this house?
Not really. I mean, we've issued property maintenance notices in the past, so they will pass what property maintenance would address.
Our ordinance just don't provide for a, like, you know, we can go board a house up if it's unsecure.
Yes.
If you can get in the house, we can go board it up. Our ordinance don't provide for stabilizing a house that...
Now, the state statute that we follow on this is basically just designed for securing a property if there's a door open, a window broken. This, what we're addressing is this health and safety issue of it being a danger of collapse, and the only avenue we have is demolition.
In the past, I personally questioned often whether or not we ought to be tearing down some houses, because just it seemed to me that the economics of it weren't really the right thing to do. But from the pictures of this house, I don't know how to, if we don't have the ability to order someone to stabilize the house, and if he doesn't do it, go stabilize it ourselves, I don't know what options we have. Otherwise, I mean, the option is to leave it the way it is and wait for it to fall down, it seems to me. And that's, I mean, that's a, from a preservation standpoint, that's obviously a cold way to look at things, but I'm not so sure, given the state of the law, that we have any real option.
We're convinced that that's what the owner had in mind.
No, I understand, but I don't know that within the law, we can do anything to stop that from happening.
I'm proposing that we don't demolish it yet. We look into it, see what it was, see if it can be a historical site of some sort. You know, I don't know exactly what kind of plan I'd have in mind, but there's something that we can do with these little old houses.
But we don't own it. We, meaning you and I and the city collectively, we don't own it.
But he can't demolish it without your approval. And what, and I'm saying that...
But he could go get a demolition permit, and it would never come to council today. Is that not true, given the condition of this property?
The owner could. They'd have to take it through the HP Commission, then they would have to grant her approval. I think they've tried that in the past, and...
But it would come here eventually.
I've been speaking at these meetings since December 3, 2008. Randy Ice called me and said, will you please go to the meetings?
Yeah. I don't doubt your connect, and if I lived in that neighborhood, I think I'd probably feel the same way you do. I guess my concern is, is there anything that we realistically, practically can do since we don't have the legal authority to go in and stabilize the structure? I don't know what, if we did, what would stabilizing accomplish? Because there may be another way to stabilize it without attaching anything to the house, and that's like we do with pools. I mean, could we order, could we, if we want some time on this, could we order fencing around that property to really eliminate the safety and health hazard?
Well, the fence, of course, will not affect the health and safety of, if it collapses, either onto the next property or to somebody that's in there. That's...
But could we do that?
Nobody can get in.
We could bring it as a, back as a securing and do that, but it's, I don't know if it would, you know, if the HP would actually want to fence around these properties.
Well, we're running out of options. That's... Yeah, that's exactly my point.
Now, that was taken just recently. I think the porch is deceptive. I know what it looks like. But if you look at the sidewalls and the back wall, the porch and that roof right there are the primary problems. And if they were stabilized, you wouldn't have that problem. They're sta, the walls are stable. There are plenty of things to fix on that. I had to rebuild my kitchen wall because it was deteriorating. It was rotted out from water use. I did it. It can be done.
Both these two structures, one story?
Yes.
Charles, what's the danger? I mean, even at its worst...
Well, they're already collapsing.
Falling onto a...
They're already collapsing.
No, no, I mean, falling onto a neighbor's house.
Just the falling and collapsing in general, if there's anybody that's there, they're an attractive nuisance. They're, you know, they're open to the small children, as she says, frequent the neighborhood. I mean, they're an attractive nuisance. If they, it's up to the owner, if it's not economically viable for him to repair it, they haven't repaired it.
I offered to buy them some time back, and he refused, well, he wanted to sell the whole block at $130,000. He wouldn't sell individually. Anytime anybody was interested in the property, he would make it so unattractive to them that nobody could buy.
Now, I want to say this. Both of these properties is in my ward, and I have driven by this location on many occasions. I'm also well aware of another property in which I had to represent an individual because of the neighborhood complaints, and ultimately, the number of citations caused this individual to be jailed in the city of Oklahoma City. Now, just let me finish. I am really perplexed with the argument here, because there is a multitude of properties all over this city that, to give the exception to your argument, and to allow a continued standing nuisance in a neighborhood where there are children, and the potential of a child going into this property through any one of these open entries, and this roof, as it stands right today, with a little bit of heavy rain, would collapse. And I find it kind of interesting that we could sit here and argue the historical preservation of this as if everything remains the same, and it hasn't remained the same. Where was the historical preservation argument before this property got to this point? The deterioration didn't happen overnight. And I just can't understand how we could sit here and even think about, giving an exception to this property, when there are properties that are a lot less than this as far as the structural condition, that we have sat here and approved the demolition, we have approved the unsecured status of the properties, and those owners have had to bear the burden of the ordinance that it is presently drafted. And I just can't, you know, I don't care what argument comes out of this, the name dropping and all of that.
I know.
The point that I see is that this is a dilapidated structure. It should have been before the council, long before now. And whatever HP has, the arguments that you make there, I could make the same argument in any property on northeast side of Oklahoma City that has been removed, that has been deter, that has been demolished. But we can't continue to make this here cry about historical, everything has a historical legacy to it. But things change, and times change. And I think this is something that has changed, you know? It would be different if there had been some maintenance and some continued maintenance on this, and an individual just fell, you know, hard on his luck and wasn't able to maintain it. I can't see where this falls in that category. And I can't understand where the argument for the HP and all this historical argument, what was it, 20 years ago or 10 years ago, when obviously this property started deteriorating? When you look at the foundation of this property, there's nothing that you could probably go in there, and any engineer would probably tell you, you'd just be crazy to try to go in there and say, you're going to restore this? The foundation is bricks that's just basically sitting on top of each other. And what I'm looking at right now, you can see that's brick. That's not a poured concrete foundation.
Your argument about the man across the street is one of our issues. Our whole block are wondering why...
I preface that, but we can forget that. This is this property.
But we're wondering why this can happen, and his, and he had to go to jail for this.
Because his is not in this condition. The roof is not falling in.
We don't, well, if...
The roof is not falling in.
...boxes from ceiling to floor on the front porch.
Well, that's if you go inside the house. But when you go inside this house, you have, you have a roof that's getting ready to collapse. And I think we owe, I think we owe the trust and the honor to the department that we have designated to go out and determine whether or not properties are in bad enough condition for the safety and the beautification of our city, for them to do their job. If this house was in front of your house, would you complain about it?
This house is next door to my house.
Okay. But you have no complaints about the condition of the property?
We have complained to HPC, the police, the neighborhood services. We have complained to everyone. And I'm going to do what I said I wasn't going to do. Mr. Salyer owns these houses. He has the pocketbook to fix them, and he's owned them since 1981, and he's chosen not to fix them. We should not have to pay for that. That's not our fault.
But you're not paying for the demolition of this property.
Why should I?
You're not paying for this.
I don't understand. What's the connection with that?
Well, you just said that you shouldn't have to pay for it.
We shouldn't have to pay that, to allow our neighborhood to reduce in value just because another owner refused to maintain his properties. We asked him to. He challenged one person, well, what to move into the neighborhood for? It's a terrible neighborhood. So, we've done everything we can. We're angry, as you can tell. We're upset, we're frustrated. We tried. And Debbie did talk about that issue with the man across the street. She said the same thing. Why, why did he have to go to jail? And look here, we've got this garbage next to us that someone won't take care of. So, we tried.
How long, what's the history of citations and notifications on this property? What have we been trying to get the owner to do for how long?
Well, actually, I didn't bring that with me for other problems that they've had on it, but I'm sure there's been several, several notices when the planning would have had that through their HP before it came to us. But it's been cited several, several times for various states of disrepair, dilapidation in the past.
As Mr. Kelly says, this hasn't just happened in the last 18 months, two years, and...
People were living in that house when I moved in 15 years ago. People were living in both houses, and they were doing a little bit of repair on both of them. And then, when those people moved out, nothing was done after that. Mike Berry is a good manager, goes over and mows the lawn and makes sure that's taken care of.
Mayor, I'm just, I'm disappointed myself, that I'm just not familiar with these properties as close as they are to where I reside in Ward 2. Mr. Kelly is. I don't know if others on the council are interested, but I'd like a couple weeks to go, I'd like to see it myself and come back. Well, that's fine. We can, you certainly have the, you know, right to defer this for two weeks. We can certainly do that. The fact that the property's been owned by the same owner for a long time and nothing's happened, that gives me very little encouragement that extending this is going to do any good.
Well, and it was sold July 27.
I understand that, but it just seems like that if nothing's been done now, it seems very unlikely that anything will be done going forward because of the extent of the decase that we've experienced right now. Go ahead, Larry.
Thank you, Your Honor. Charles, just see if I'm on the right track here. If today we vote to demolish this property, a notice will go to the property owner of our action. The property owner will have 30 days to do whatever he or she might want to do to nullify, if you will, that order. If he or she does nothing to it, then in 30 days, we issue a contract, and we have the property demolished, and the bill for that goes as a lien against the property. And so, should that individual ever want to sell that property, he would have to, or she would have to pay the amount for that demolition. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Thank you.
I don't understand investing in demolition, but not in fixing the property up.
Well, we don't have any right to invest in fixing it up. That's not...
No, no, not you, the owner.
But that's the decision the owner has to make, and we can't comment on that really. It's his decision. Whether it's good or bad is up to him to decide, and history will take its place.
Charles, is it correct that this has been an ongoing battle with, not the city council, but with another organization, that the owner has wanted to demolish this property? Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay, so, now that the issue is beyond that battle, it's down to us, then I think we have a duty to do what is right, and what is right is destroy, remove this property from the delocation. I mean, it's a nuisance, no matter how you look at it, no matter what arguments you make, and I don't care who started it, living there and who built it, but you can find that all over the city of Oklahoma City.
They're just not as loud as we are.
I guarantee you...
They should speak up.
You know, that's the unfortunate thing, because there's a lot of people in this city that didn't have the opportunity to stand where you're standing and voice the concerns about the demolition and the gentrification of their community and their neighborhood, and that happens to be an area which I represent also.
They all, they have to walk through the door.
And so, I'm just telling you now that I'm going to vote for the demolition of this property because it fits within the criteria that has been designated by this city council as an ordinance for the removal of dilapidated properties in a community.
Historic Preservation District wants to say that.
Excuse me, Councilman Marge, would you like to make comment?
Well, to me, it's an issue that gets back to the, we talk about ownership rights all the time for different things, and we don't have the ability to force an owner of a property to do anything. They have the legal right to do whatever they want to do with their property, including doing nothing with their property. To me, the telling tale is that the owner or his representative is not down here complaining about us getting ready to tear these houses down. And as long as they've had to refurbish them if they wanted to, or sell them to somebody else to refurbish them, and that hasn't happened, I just don't see how we want to get into a discussion any longer about trying to find a way to force this owner to either sell when he doesn't want to, or to refurbish when they don't want to. So, I think we need to move on with the demolition of these properties.
And following up on Larry's comment, whatever happens here, there's a 30-day period before anything will actually start. Is that right, Charles?
Yes.
And so, there's 30 days, Ms. Pemberton, for you...
How many days?
30 days.
Can you, can you put it off for two weeks, like this man's...
Well, there's no virtue. Since the 30-day period will start after we adopt this resolution, there's 30 days for you and your associates who are interested in this to come to the common resolution outside of demolition.
Oh, that's, well, that's why I was saying, can we have two weeks?
You've got 30 days.
That's what I was, I was hoping for more.
30 days is what we can give you, because I think there... 30 days is what we can give you, because I think there's a strong feeling among the council to go ahead with this ordinance today. And we do appreciate your comments, but you do have 30 days now to come up with some solution.
Three days.
30 days.
Yeah. I think we ought, I think one thing we ought to do, though, we ought to, we should be on record as that we oppose permitting someone to do something indirectly that they couldn't do directly. Directly, he could have gone and asked for a demolition permit, they've gone to HP, and they would have turned it down, and we would have been here debating a demolition permit that they had turned down. He wants to tear the property down because he believes its economic value is greater by leaving it vacant and then doing something commercial. I think we ought to think, and somehow in the record, we ought to note that had he applied for commercial zoning a year ago or five years ago, he would have been turned down. This wouldn't have worked, because he's in that, he is in that historic area where historic houses are, and we wouldn't have let him build a zoo there. I mean, so now what we're going to do is create a situation where there's a vacant lot there, or two vacant lots, and he's going to say, "Well, they're highest and best uses. Now, got to be a 7-Eleven or a McDonald's or a..."
And that's the point. That's the bottom line right there.
And so we're going to say, "Well, there are no houses there. He's really right about that." And so what we did, we let him come through the back door to do something we would have never permitted him to do if he'd have came to us directly. And at least we ought to take note that we're doing that, that his failure to maintain that property was a conscious decision on his part because he wanted to determine that that, or sell that property or rezone that property commercial and develop it that way. It's in an area where we would not have permitted that had he asked us for that in the first place. I mean, I don't think there's much, we have much hope of convincing him to fix the property up. He's led it go to the point where the economics of fixing the property up, we all know that anything's possible. You can pay an engineer enough money to come up with a plan, and you can pay a contractor enough money to rebuild anything. So we, to say it's, it could be redone, it's really just a function of money, whether it could be or not. We know that. But I think the underlying problem that I have with this is not that this is a house in the middle of a neighborhood that's somehow rather, pardon me, somehow rather is going to be, another residential structure is going to be there, or it's going to sit there vacant for a long time. But we're going to see, maybe at my age, probably I won't see it, but somebody on this horseshoe is going to see this come back as an application for commercial zoning in an area where we would not have permitted commercial zoning had the houses been there and been maintained. We just wouldn't have done it. HP wouldn't have, the HP ordinance wouldn't have let us do it.
We can still have that attitude. Whether there's any progress on that.
I understand, I understand, but I think we ought to make note that this is a, in my opinion, this is a way to try to do something indirectly that he really couldn't do direct, or he would have had a heck of a time doing directly. If we're going to go forward with it, I...
The fact that you've made these comments, it'll be in the record.
Yeah, okay. That's why I made them.
You've made, you've made note of it. Thank you.
Well, I would like to take exception to that, simply because the owner is not here to speak as to what his intentions are or what his desires are. And I think the speculation that we make in reference to that, that argument, is not quite just to the owner of the property. The owner hasn't came in here and told us that he has plans to rezone the property once it's demolished. We don't know whether that, how do you know that they're not going to build another house there?
He asked to put an apartment...
So I just don't want, I don't want to speak on behalf of the owner when the owner's not here or a representative for the owner to speak for himself.
Okay, we, I think we've had a pretty full discussion.
May I say one thing?
One thing?
Um, as far as name dropping, as far as name dropping, I'm simply proud that those are my ancestors, and I would hope to leave my footprint on Oklahoma City, too. And as far as my walking in the door, anybody can walk in this door and ask for, ask to be heard. I am not a wealthy, powerful winance. I'm disabled. I have very little money, and so it has nothing to do with name dropping. It has to do with wanting to see Oklahoma City be what it says it wants to be, which is the historical...
And we appreciate that, Ms. Pemberton, and we're going to do what we can to accommodate you. 30 days, I know it's not as long as you'd like to have, but it is 30 days.
Could you grant that if you...
The 30 days is built into the ordinance. We don't have to grant it. The minute we...
Oh, no, I know. I'm asking, could you, if you chose to, could you grant me longer?
No, I don't think so.
Considering those comments.
I think the ordinance is clear. The 30 days is there, and I don't think we can. We have the item now. I think we've had a very fruitful, interesting discussion. Larry, do you have a comment?
I'd like to move the resolution.
Move the resolution? All right.
I just thought I would say Catherine Montgomery, Historic Preservation Officer for the City of Oklahoma City. And I'm very thankful for the discussion that's occurred today. As you know, this is something new, separating out HP properties that are being proposed for demolition or under the dilapidated structures statutes. And I think the point is that there are certain areas of our city that have been zoned, HP or HL, which has all gone through the public process and the approval of city council to do so, representing about 3% of our entire housing stock. So I think that just emphasizes that already we as a community have voiced our opinion of the importance of representing the historical development of Oklahoma City by example of these particular properties, just like Williamsburg does it for our country. In addition to that, to say that this process works, we have a property in the Paseo that went through the dilapidated processing, went through the dilapidated process, was subsequently purchased by a new owner, and was given the immediate opportunity to make repairs under ordinary maintenance and repair, which was, which does not require a certificate of appropriateness, so that they could stabilize that property and refurbish it, and it will be brought back online as an art gallery and an apartment. So, you know, the dilapidated process can work to actually help elevate the public notification of the kinds of things that we're trying to promote for a healthy city. In addition to that, I recently returned from the National Alliance of Preservation Commission's conference in Grand Rapids, and I learned about what some other communities are doing regarding dilapidated processing, perhaps intentional, you know, demolition by intent, or what am I trying to say? I'm trying to say demolition by neglect, where they actually place limits on the redevelopment of a property if that was to occur. So for example, if a property had to be demolished, then along with that, it could not be redeveloped for a certain period of time, five years, 20 years? It just depends on how much that community values those properties that are being targeted. So I'm thankful for the conversation, and I would be very happy to explore this concept of some kind of different way of not only dealing with dilapidated structures just in the HP areas, but in all areas, where people are willfully allowing their property to decline in an effort to do something different.
The ordinance that you're talking about that put a term on redevelopment, did it also include what might go there? I mean, how it might be redeveloped?
One such community is skiing, skiing community in Colorado. Yeah, Aspen. Aspen actually has like 20 years, if you tear something around.
Well, I'm not as interested in the delay as much as I am the, what would happen, what could happen. Say, I mean, you could do five years. You could do 15 minutes if you, if you, if you put an appropriate reuse in, so that the reuse was consistent with what had been there before or what was, what the other surrounding HP designation.
Right, and this would be demolition in the, in the dark of the night, for example. If someone came in and the property just showed up demolished the next day, that's when those kinds of rules would apply. Now, you know, we have several properties in our HP districts that have been determined to be deteriorated beyond repair, and they've been demolished, but along with that demolition permission, if you will, from the Historic Preservation Commission, has come a proposal for a new house. Jefferson Park, you know, Neighborhood, Neighbors Association and Positively Paseo are perfect examples of doing that.
Yeah, I would, I for one would be in favor of some kind of an ordinance being brought forward so we could talk about it, because I think it's more practical to deal with it that way than to deal with it the way, when a house is in the condition that this one's in, where just a quick look at the house would indicate that there's really not a whole lot you can do. I mean, you, you move from the, gosh, I'd like for them to, to the, it's going to be so expensive, it doesn't make economic sense to do it. And I would like, I would like to see some kind of ordinance which would let us deal with the practical side of a solution like this without throwing the baby out with the bathwater, and that is setting it up for something that's going to be totally incompatible with the surrounding HP district.
Yeah, that would be a matter of, I understand your comment, Pete, for another...
Yes, yes, but I mean, she was here, and I thought that was a good time to talk about it.
I think it's a good point that we maybe need to look at the process, but I think at this point in time, we have something before, so we have to do it.
Agreed.
We have a motion made in second, and...
Mayor, so the intent of the 30-day notice, we haven't, we haven't gotten the attention of the owner in the period leading up to this, and there's been plenty of opportunity. Part of the intent of the, of moving forward rather than continuing it is the last real opportunity to get the attention, it sounds like, of the owner to reconsider this.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded.
Second the motion.
Thank you. And this is voting on item 8I2, is a resolution declaring the structures to be dilapidated and they be set up for removal, elimination. Is there any further discussion or comments? Please cast your votes, and the item passes. Thank you. Item, thank you, Mrs. Pemberton. We appreciate your comments. Item 8J is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on any item under 8J1?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Want a clarification on 8I? Was it A and B to vote? Okay.
Yes, we covered both houses.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody now who would like to speak under any item under 8J1?
Motion made in second.
We have a motion made in second. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes, and the item is approved. Thank you. Item 8K is some revocable right-of-way use permits. Number one is the Capitol Hill Main Street. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on that? A motion made in second to approve item 8K1, the Capitol Hill Main Street project. Please cast your votes, and the item is approved. Item 8K2 is a revocable use permit for the Oklahoma and Arkansas chapter of Alzheimer's Diseases and Disorders, and this is a hold-the-memory walk, October 23rd in Bricktown.
Move it.
Second. A motion made in second. Any comments or discussion? All those, please cast your votes, and the item carries. Item 8K3 is the Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Foundation Race for the Cure, October 9th in downtown in Bricktown.
Move it.
All right, I understand there are some people here who would like to speak on this issue.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you. And if you'll give us your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Lorna Palmer. I'm the executive director of Susan G. Komen for the Cure for Central Oklahoma, and this is April Bogatich. She's our event coordinator. My address is 802 South Pickard Avenue, Norman, Oklahoma. This will be our 17th Annual Komen Oklahoma City Race for the Cure, and we're expecting 17,000 participants this year. The money we raise here in Central Oklahoma stays here in Central, 75% stays here in Central Oklahoma to fund breast cancer screening, education, and treatment programs, and 25% goes to research to find the cure for breast cancer.
Thank you.
One in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and it touches everyone. You can't find someone who doesn't know someone who's been affected by this disease. So we encourage you all to come out, and thank you very much. And we have goodies.
How many do you anticipate this year?
17,000.
17,000.
And this year, we awarded $700,000 to local organizations because of events like the Race for the Cure. And since we've been here since 1994, we've awarded over $8 million to local organizations.
And is that money primarily the result of this particular event?
Yes.
That is excellent.
Yeah, the Race for the Cure is our signature event, and we expect to raise over $1 million this year just with that event.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
That's a really important caution. I think we have a motion made and seconded to approve this item. Please cast your votes, and the item is approved, and good luck again. Item 8L is a resolution approving the revised Oklahoma City Riverfront Development Authority rules, regulations, and guidelines for the Oklahoma River, Meridian Avenue to the American Indian Boulevard, Eastern Avenue. And is there anybody who would like to address the council?
Very quickly, Mayor, counsel. As ordinances are changed, and several ordinances have already been changed by this council upon recommendation of the Riverfront Redevelopment Authority, the Riverfront Redevelopment Authority changes or makes additions to its rules and regulations and guidelines. What you have before you today are, is a request by the Riverfront Authority to have council accept a resolution or approve a resolution accepting these new revised guidelines. Included in these guidelines that you've already passed on ordinances regarding was a creation of a zone M and changes in the definition of water scheme. These are pretty much housekeeping matters, but we do bring these before you on behalf of the Riverfront Authority.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Is anybody here who would like to make comments on this particular item?
Thank you, sir.
Second, we have a motion and second to approve this resolution. Please cast your votes, and the resolution is approved. Item M is a resolution amending the International Fire Code, having to do with fireworks. Is there anybody here who would like to comment on this particular item? Have a motion made in second to approve the item. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes, and the item M is approved. Item N is an appeal of the action by the Traffic and Transportation Commission dealing with the speed limit on Northwest 150th Street. We've got several people signed up to speak on this particular thing, and I would ask you, as we call your name, to come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and try to hold your remarks to three minutes or so. And if a previous speaker has covered the point that you would like to make, it, as dense as we are, it really wouldn't be helpful for us to hear it twice. Once is probably enough, so thank you very much for your concern. I'm going to try to divide this up into two groups. The first ones who are in favor of the ordinance as its speed limit changes was adopted, and those who are opposed to it. And then if there's anybody who's neutral on this, we'll have them speak first. John May, would you come forward, please, John?
I'm John May, and I come as a citizen of the city of Oklahoma City. I live at 11705 Hackney Lane. If you look in the directory, it says Yukon, Oklahoma, but because of your wise wisdom, you annexed that area and it became Oklahoma City some time ago, so it's part of District or Ward 8. My concern has always been, as far as roads go, not just for transporting people, but also the safety concerns, the safety of people, and that's why I'm here. If you, pardon me, I'm going to go over a couple of things that I think are important that you realize. You're given distances that are allowances for speed, and that's totally acceptable at the 45-mile range, miles per hour. It's also acceptable at 40. The amount of traffic on the road is tremendous. I was just there at 8:20 this morning and backup of traffic at the Portland and Northwest 150th. The backup on traffic to the south went all the way to the Kilpatrick. That's a mile... on traffic to the south went all the way to the Kilpatrick. That's a mile, almost a mile and a half backup traffic. And every one of the intersections had backed up traffic of at least 20 to 25 vehicles. The amount of ingress and egress, there are a total of six, three on the north side of the road, three on the south side, which means vehicles can enter and exit the road six different times from each direction. So you might want to count that as 12, but it's six actual ingress and egress. That means that...And keep in mind, the road only has two lanes, one east and one west. Period. No other lanes. The six exits I mentioned before mean that you're going to have an exit on average every 880 feet. Because it's a mile long, six exits, something on that order, 880 feet. Why is that important? Well, if you look at your report also, the 85 percentile on speed is 59 miles per hour, which in a used to be a 50-mile zone, which means 15% of the people are going 59 or faster. Some of those 85% are exceeding the 50-mile, and people are trying to get to their homes safely. That's what this is all about. A road should be there to get vehicles from one point to another, but done safely for the public service. That's what we're here about. That's what I think is the most important aspect of anything we do on roads, public safety. Now, I noted that you had four letters from homeowners in the packet. Please note that they were form letters. Not that that diminishes their interest, but it says that they didn't have time to write their own letter, somebody wrote it for them. And in two of the four letters, people noted on a signature box didn't even sign them, which I don't know why, but were they there, not there, didn't want to sign, didn't agree with it? I don't have an idea. But the fact of the matter is, that's the factual issues. They did say in the letters that the recommendation is not 50 to 40, but they never made...So they're protesting that, but they never made a recommendation. Leave it at 50? Way too high in my estimation. 45 is acceptable. I think 40 is better for the public safety. Now, if you'll take a look at the turnoffs, in the 45-mile zone, which is a mile west of this zone that we're talking about, those go in primarily to Glardea and one other area, and they have, in all cases, a paved road on the other side, so that if a person in that entry for Glardea is on the north side and the west side of Glardea, in both cases, they have bypassed paved lanes. So if a person is going to take a left turn and move into the Glardea, somebody can go around him on the right-hand side paved. That is not available in this 40-mile zone. The other thing is, those people, those zones that are east of this one-mile area are all 40. This maintains consistency with those because this was reduced to 40. And then it goes to 45 where Glardea is. Great consistency for it. People don't have to guess what the mile per hour is. In summary, my recommendation is that you leave the speed limit at 40, that's already established, and the signs are out there, because not only is it public safety issue, but it'll save lives. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Any questions? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want me to take questions now or later.
Are there any questions of John? Thank you, John. It feels like you did a good job with that question. I'd like to...Kim, would you like to come forward now, please? I'm sorry?
May I?
Yes. Okay, how about Bill? Would you...And Bill, if you'll give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Phil Schlittler. I live at 4224 Northwest 143rd, which is in the Remington addition. I actually would like for the speed limit to stay at 50, and I'm just as concerned about public safety as everybody else is. I've lived in Remington addition for 14 years, and I think the change in speed limit is a solution looking for a problem. I've never had a problem getting in and out of the Remington addition with the speed limit at 50 miles an hour. And in fact, in the report, it says that if you look over the last 12 months, there's only been one accident at that addition. The gentleman before me says there are six entrances in and out. There's actually three main ones, the Remington addition, Lone Oak, and Glardea. The other ones he's talking about are a maintenance facility for Glardea, a just dirt road for somebody who lives there and sort of lives out in the country, we're sort of semi-country, and a barn that a person doesn't even go in and out of very much. So my preference is to keep the speed limit at a safe limit. The city came in and did a study and said that we think that it should remain at 45. It should go down to 45 because sort of half the road's at 45 now and half the road's at 50. That would be acceptable to me. My first preference would be to keep it at 50, just simply because I think you've got, when you leave our addition, you've got plenty of line of sight to see both ways and make good judgments and get in and out very safely. And I just want to be able to get back and forth as quickly and as safely as I can. So thank you for your time.
Bill, thank you very much. Gary Carter? Gary, you gave us your name and address for the record.
My name is Gary Carter, and I live at 4300 Northwest 143rd Street. That is in the Remington addition as well. I've been in and out of Remington for the past eight years, and I have never experienced any traffic problems pulling onto 150th Street in my experience. And I go in and out of the neighborhood three to six times a day. And so I'm in favor of at least bringing it back up to 45, which was what the Traffic Commission did a study and a report on it. And all the staff recommendations were that they not decrease the speed limit below 45, to keep it consistent with the other roads in that area. So... All right. One of the arguments is that this one-mile section that we're talking about is sparsely populated. It's very...It's fields, pastures. We've got two entrances in this one area. There's a little bit of confusion about the six entrances owned to it. We've got one mile that is being...was reduced from 40, from 50 to 40. The other section of the road where entrances from Glardea and Lone Oak are 45, so that, there's no request to change that. We're asking that we keep it consistent and make it 45 all the way down 150th Street. Here, I'm sorry you don't have this on your presentation, but here is an aerial photo of the surrounding area. And if you look, we've got 45 on 150th by Glardea, and then you see the area that outlined in red is where it's supposed to be. It was reduced recently from 50 to 40, even though the Traffic Commission recommended 45 miles an hour to keep it consistent. If you look at all the surrounding neighbor roadways, you've got 45, 50, 50, 50. So for consistency's sake, I don't understand why this one section of the road where we have fewer residences, an entryway that's being reduced to a lower speed limit. We went around and asked people to sign a petition, and everybody that I spoke with was in agreement that it needs to at least stay at 45. And the first thing that everybody I spoke with said was, why did they reduce it? A speed trap? So...Here's just a few photos so you can see the area. This is looking from the Remington entrance owned to 150th. You're looking at a pasture and a field. This is a photo taken by the Traffic Commission looking west down on 150th. You can see it's a straight path. You can see well over the 750 feet recommendation for a 45 to 50 mile per hour speed limit. So there's no obstruction for that, and this is straight out of the Traffic Commission's report. Here's the...If you're looking out of the Remington, looking east, you can see a straight line of sight for over the 750 feet that's recommended. This is driving on this section of the road. If you notice, you're looking at fields on either side of it, except for the two entrances of Remington and Monticello. There's another photo continuing. This is at the Monticello exit. We're still looking at a very rural area. More photos of fields. This is the road that's 40 miles an hour, which seems really unjust. And now we're coming up to the intersection of Portland. This is where it does get backed up in the mornings because of the red light, and there's a lot of traffic going on, but it's not people doing 50 miles an hour. They're coming to a stop sign at this point and having a hard time merging on. Here's another picture of the fields. So I just wanted to give you an area of, an idea of what we're looking at. We're not looking at a majorly populated area. Okay, background information on this is that some members of the Remington Association sent a letter in requesting that the speed be reduced from 50 to 40. There was not any kind of notification sent out.
Gary, that's a point that we really don't want to get into.
Okay.
Because we...City Council has no ability to get into that at all.
Okay.
Anybody who could have come, anybody could have come forward and asked for that reduction.
Okay, well, whoever...There was not a...It was represented the whole neighborhood.
That's an issue that we can't get involved in, Gary.
Okay.
I don't mean to be rude to you, but that's something that we could spend a lot of time talking about, and that we could have no influence on whatsoever.
All right. So the point I want to make, too, is that the Commission approved to change the speed limit, reduce it from 50 to 45 against the recommendation of the Traffic Report. And I'm going to just show you a few bullet points from the Traffic Report by the pay...
We've had a chance to read that, Gary, so I don't mean to cut you short, but three minutes was a sort of a guideline that we wanted you to...
Okay, well, just real quick here, that we're just asking that we hit a happy median and follow the report, the recommendation by the Commission that did the study, and just keep it consistent at 45, split the difference, keep it 45 all the way down 150th. We've got 107 petition signatures, 45 Remington residents. And I did want to point out some things at the last hearing that were erroneous facts that were pointed out to the Traffic Commission. One argument to say to get it reduced to 40 was saying that Northwest 164th Street, one mile north, they said that that was 50 mile, was a 40 mile per hour zone for that one mile. It is not. It is 50. And that passes the Deer Creek Elementary School when it's 50 miles an hour. It does reduce for the school, but it's 50 miles, so that was presented wrong to the Commission in the previous argument to get it reduced. And I was going to say that the 85th percentile was misquoted, too, saying that 85% of the people were going 59 or over. The 85th percentile does not say that 50, that 85% are going 59 or over. It's saying that they're going 59 or under. We just want to request that you do reduce it to 45 miles per hour, just to be consistent with the remaining section of that roadway that's west of it. I want to thank you for your attention.
Gary, thank you very much. Kim, are you...
I'm here.
Okay, Kim, thank you very much. And I just wanted to point out that this is a stack of emails and letters, copies of some petitions that I received, so there's been a significant interest out there in this particular case. Dennis, would you like to comment from the staff's viewpoint as to how they came up with their 45 mile an hour recommendation?
It was based on the adjacent, the speed limit on the adjacent mile to the west, the site, the available site distance that the entries into Remington addition, and the amount of traffic there. And the staff recommended that the speed be set at 45, and that recommendation still stands.
And that recommendation was five miles below the, what was then the existing speed limit?
Correct.
And in your review, you took into consideration, hopefully, safety as a prime consideration?
Yes.
And in your opinion, 45 miles an hour would be a safe speed to operate a vehicle at that area?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Sam?
Mayor, I just, I think as development occurs, we'll probably see a reduction request in the future. But in the meantime, I mean, it sounds like a pretty simple fix. You're both sides saying, I prefer 40, but if I can't live with 45, and prefer 50, but can't...So I would, I would move to the 45 mile an hour.
Any other comments or questions? I would second the motion then. And the motion is to accept the Traffic Commission's staff recommendation and reduce the speed limit out there from 50 to 45 miles an hour, so everyone understands what we're suggesting here. And I've had some conversations with the people who have recommended 40, and they are going to accept 45 as a compromise. So I think if we go to 45, we will have answered the concerns of most of the people out there. Is there any further questions or comments? Gary?
Yeah, I'm a little confused in what you're doing. You're granting the appeal, but you're modifying the motion to 45.
We are...The motion is to accept the Traffic Commission staff's recommendation of 45 miles an hour.
But the staff, the staff's recommendation is not, is not the item. The item is the Traffic Commission's recommendation of 40.
Right. And so we...
So you need to make an amendment to the Traffic Commission's recommendation?
If that's the case, that's what we have to do.
Well, Amy Decker.
Amy?
In their appeal, they're asking for 45 miles an hour, I believe, so you could just vote to approve the appeal, I think would be the motion.
So, Sam, are you comfortable with that? Appeal, we're approving the appeal, and the appeal is to go to 45 miles per hour, which is essentially the Traffic Commission staff recommendation. Are we clear on what we're doing here now? You are, I am. All those, please cast your votes, and the appeal is approved, and the speed limit now will be 45 miles per hour. Thank you very much.
Soon as that go into effect, is that an immediate change?
When they post the signs.
It will go into effect when the signs are posted, and that shouldn't take too long. Okay, we move us to item 8o, a resolution authorizing municipal council to confess judgments. And I understand we do not need a...
Do not.
Do not need any execution. And we have a motion made and second to approve item 8o. Cast your votes, and item 8o is approved. Item 8f, pardon me, 8p, its claims recommended for denial. Is there anybody here who wants, like to speak on any item under 8f, I mean, 8p1?
Your honor.
If we can have your name and address for the record, sir, and tell us which item you want to talk about, please.
The item is 8p1h.
8p1h, and that would be Santa?
Santa.
Santa, excuse me, Incorporated?
That's correct.
Okay, Ward 3.
My name is John Swinford. I'm an attorney. I'm speaking for Santa. My address is 1041 Northwest Grand Boulevard. The subject property in this matter is located at 720 South MacArthur. And this claim arose when the owner of this property's maintenance man realized that the water had been turned off. The property is a hotel. Property had been turned off, went to find out what the matter was, and was told that there was, by a crew out there, that they were fixing the line. Later turned out that actually what they were doing when the owner got out there was they were replacing the meter. No problem with that. Happy to have them replace the meter. You understand that the meter and the billing for this line goes to Santa Inc., and Santa Inc. was not in any way notified that this was going to take place. Again, no problem there. The line, however, was fixed, and after a representative, another representative of the city came out and spoke to the owner, and when the line was fixed, a crew member came to the hotel, spoke to the owner, and said, you're, we need to flush these lines out, basically. So what we're going to do is we're going to actually flush the toilets and turn the faucets on and off and get the lines cleared. What didn't take place is that the lines ran into the boiler of this property and into the laundry equipment, and... the laundry equipment, and they are, they feed the sprinkler system. The boiler had a problem. It has on it what is called a flow meter, and I hope no one will ask me any great details about what a flow meter is, except that it got clogged up with the dirt that came from this repair. And also, the laundry equipment did the same thing. And a claim was made to the city. The city has recommended denial, and I understand the denial to be based on the fact that somebody was confused about what buildings were actually served by this line. But I hope I've made it clear from what I've said, that actually, if there was any misunderstanding about what buildings were served, it was solved before the end of the repair, and a representative of the city, a crew member, was there in this property trying to get things cleared up. The problem is, they did not get the matter cleared up, and cause my client, Santa Inc., these damages, and the bills, invoices for these damages have been submitted to the city. If you have any questions of me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Are there any questions? Kenny, do you have somebody who'd like to speak on this?
Yes, Amy.
Hi, Amy Harrison, municipal councillor's office. In doing the research and investigating this claim, we did find that there was a meter replacement done at this, at 720 South MacArthur. The city crew, which there were just a couple of guys, notified a restaurant that had the address, 720 South MacArthur, facing MacArthur Boulevard. Come to find out, once a member of the staff at Green Carpet Inn came to them to find out what was going on, that the Green Carpet Inn was also serviced by the same meter, and their address was also 720 South MacArthur, which the city crew was unaware of. So they had already notified the restaurant, which faces MacArthur, but was not aware that the hotel also had an address of 720 South MacArthur, because they were primarily on Southwest 5th and face Southwest 5th. So there's no indication of any negligence as far as notifying the customers about the meter repair that was done. They made every effort to, you know, what, they thought they were notifying the correct party at 720 South MacArthur, that they were turning the water off to go ahead and make adjustments to the faucet so that the water could run out in order to avoid, you know, any, any problems. But, but basically, there's no indication of any negligence. As far as the invoices that were submitted from the claimant for their repairs, they're primarily in the month following, when the meter repairs were done, they are limited to the boiler, to a washing machine. And some of the invoices don't really have to do with any damages that, that actually would have been a result of any clogging of the line. And there's no indication that was actually any sprinkler damage.
And even if notice had been given, you still could have had the same thing happen.
Correct. The, the building was built in 1975, and it could just be a private problem.
Any other questions? Larry, or do you have, since this isn't your ward, do you have any comments?
Well, I see here a statement based on the above information and applicable Oklahoma law that we should deny this. Does the council have the authority in this case to pay this claim? Or because there was no negligence in your mind, we are prohibited from paying this claim?
Prohibited from paying the claim. There's no indication of any negligence.
We don't have any evidence of negligence.
May I speak to that?
Yes, sir.
The question of negligence, first of all, seems to be in the council's mind that is a question of notice. And I, I want to make it clear, your billing, your, your billing for this meter goes to Santa Inc., no one else. That is the party you're dealing with. The second part of this is the, is the superior knowledge of your maintenance crew in what to be done. Once they found out the true place where this water was going, the building, then they conducted the remedy of flushing toilets and turning faucets on and off and trying to drain the system. But they did not go further to ascertain the full aspect of, of this, of this problem. And I simply submit to you, you take an owner by surprise, who might have been told before, and might have gone out and gotten some sort of special advice if that, if that were needed, but, but you'd simply take them by surprise on the spur of the moment, and you tell them, this is, this is going to solve the problem, we're just simply going to turn faucets on and off. It doesn't, it doesn't solve the problem. They've got to be much more aware than the average owner that there is sophisticated machinery. And when I say sophisticated machinery, a boiler is not terribly sophisticated, but one who's in this business would understand that there was a flow meter or something like that connected to this, this matter. Actually, insofar as billings are concerned, I don't think there was an undue delay. I do believe that it was made clear to the city that with regard to the boiler, the boiler was shut down and could not restart, not on this day, but on a later day. And that indeed did take place. And it, the, it took, and the problem was simply the dirt in the line going through that, that flow meter. I hope I've made myself clear in that regard.
Are there any comments or questions, Larry?
Well, your honor, I think we have, Kenny, correct me if I'm wrong here. We seem to have maybe some discussion on the facts and the causes. Based on that, if, if everything this gentleman says turns out to be true, then that might make us able to pay the claim, if we got additional information.
We could do a little further investigation on it, and we'll actually sit down with the water department employees, everyone, and discuss it with them.
I'd like to move then for a two-week continuance. Motion made in second for two-week continuance to do some further investigation. And so that would be September 28th. Then, we'll look into it again. We'll continue our investigation, sir. Thank you. Okay, and then we have to, the other claims recommended for denial, oh, I'm sorry, we were going to vote on the deferral first. And this, the motion has been made in second to defer this item for two weeks to September 28th. Is that correct? Okay. Please cast your votes, and the item is deferred. And now we need to vote on the claims recommended for denial. Let remain here. Motion made in second. Is there any further discussion? Please cast your votes, and the item's approved. Item 9A is claims recommended for approval. Is anybody here who'd like to speak on any of the claims listed under item 8A1?
Lily, I have a question.
Okay. Are there any discussion or comments? Please cast your votes, and item 8A1 is approved. Items from council. Item 10A is a public hearing regarding ordinance relating to miscellaneous provisions in the noise ordinance. We have representative from municipal councillor's office to tell us what, some changes.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council. I, this is Cindy Richard from the city attorney's office, and I told you two weeks ago that we'd do a fuller presentation on the proposed noise chapter amendments. And so I brought a little PowerPoint today to kind of take you through the, the major changes that we're making. There are two ordinances involved, essentially, well, the entire Chapter 34 noise, and then one section from Chapter 30, disturbing the peace, is also impacted. A little background that I mentioned last time, Councilman McAtee started us on this venture about a year ago with some issues that were arising from some outdoor events, and noise was being generated. And he asked us to look at both the permit procedures for noise and the ordinances that were involved. He wanted to be able to address noise during special events and when noise permits had been issued, and he was questioning how, you know, enforcement would, would work and that sort of thing. So we began an extensive review that involved looking through the whole chapter, because everything in the noise chapter is kind of interconnected. We consulted with assistant city managers, M.T. Berry and Jim Thompson, Chief William City, the Development Services Director, Bob Teener, several members of their staffs, and City Council Chief of Staff, Debbie Martin, particularly about the permit process. Several members of our office were also involved, and I'd particularly like to commend to you Ed Hasbrook and Orville Jones, who did a lot of preliminary work on this. Some legal considerations that we had to keep in the front of our mind were primarily that when noise is made in compliance with the provisions of the noise chapter, then you can't issue a person a citation, not for excessive noise and not for disturbing the peace. And so knowing that, and knowing that that's a basis, a foundation around which we have to work, it's, it's important to establish specific parameters and limitations for noise, and particularly in the permit process. Now, beyond the legal considerations, there are practical considerations that we have to look at. When we're talking about noise permit enforcement, it was evident after some of our research into this, that most of the permit violations were going to occur in the evenings and on the weekends, and that's primarily when you're going to have police officers involved rather than code enforcement officials. So they're more likely to respond to those complaints. So we had to deal with the issue of how are they going to be able to check a noise violation? The more I looked into the issue of using decimal meter readers, the more complex it became, and I started thinking of it from a kind of a prosecutorial perspective, and the evidence that we would have to elicit, it's just very complicated, as well as expensive, and they're hard to maintain. So we had to look for a more practical enforcement tool for the noise permit process. And so we determined, kind of looked around the country, and another measurement factor that's used is distance rather than decimal levels. And that's also something that can be more easily understood by the general public out there when they come to seek a noise permit. They might not understand what 65 decimals is, but they'll understand 500 feet or 2,000 feet. So we went with that in our approach to the permit process. Now, another practical consideration that we had to give was construction and demolition noise. You can, again, look around the country, and there are municipalities that have entire chapters devoted to construction noise and how you mitigate those noise issues. You know, we just decided not to go that route, and decided that instead, permits for construction and demolition noise would route through the Director of Development Services, and then he can consult with Public Works and see what kinds of things would need to go in a permit to accomplish that. So now I want to get into the significant changes after discussing those considerations. As I mentioned before, we have to make sure that noise made in compliance is not a violation. And so disturbing the peace, one of the things that we've done is to clarify that, and say if you're making noise in compliance with these various provisions, you're not going to be charged with disturbing the peace. And the same thing applies for a noise violation. So those two sections virtually parallel one another. Now, in further developing the permit process, we're removing the undue hardship requirement. It really wasn't being utilized that much anyway. We weren't requiring people to show undue hardship, so we're taking that out to deal with what practically we do on a day-to-day basis. We're requiring that the permit application be submitted at least 10 business days in advance of the noise event. Various things that we're requiring the applicant to identify are the location and boundaries, types of noise, location and source of sound, the individual responsible for ensuring compliance with the permit, we want to make sure and have that person's name, any organization that may be involved, and dates and times, and any other pertinent information. The permits will be limited to no more than three consecutive days. They'll be limited to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. for residential areas, and 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight in non-residential areas. Limiting permits to no more than three per year at the same location, doesn't matter whose name you submit for the permit in, it's, it's limited to the location, except in cases of urgent necessity. And that's the only place that's really, urgent necessity is required, if you have to exceed the three per year. It was decided that the noise for a permit would be limited to a distance not to exceed 2,500 feet, that's about a half a mile. And it can be limited as the permit application goes through and it's reviewed by both code enforcement and police, with their recommend, recommendation to the assistant city manager, it can be limited to less than 2,500 feet. And they will take in consideration a number of factors. Establishing factors which can be considered by the permit, I'll just, for denial of the permit, can also be used to limit the permit. And some of those things are the zoning that's involved, the population density, the natural acoustics of the area, whether it would impact a noise-sensitive zone, which we'll discuss in a minute, impact upon traffic, parking, and pedestrian rights of way, if there's support or objection by adjacent property owners and occupants, prior noise complaints, and staff is pretty good back there with Debbie, that they, they let Assistant City Manager Berry know when there's been prior issues that have arisen in an area. Past compliance or lack of compliance with noise permits, past convictions for noise violations, insufficient applications, false or misleading information, those are the types of things that can be considered for denial or for crafting the permit to, to limit it. One of the things that we also did was we don't want officers in the field having, that have to make a decision about whether a permit will continue to be good if they perceive that there's a violation. And so we're providing for an automatic revocation of a noise permit if a citation is used for a violation of the permit. So it happens automatically by ordinance. The permits, he will be required to maintain a copy of the permit out at the site. One of the other things that we wanted to do was to clarify that sound level standards, which are measured in decimals, are required for stationary sources of sound. And interestingly, we didn't define stationary, stationary sources of sound previously in the noise chapter. And so we're going to add the clarification, that the decimal levels are limited to the stationary source, and we're adding a definition for stationary source of sound, which means a device that creates sound while fixed in position. Can be like agricultural machinery, pumps, fans, air compressors, things like that. Now, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to propose to you another little housekeeping amendment, because we do have a few other locations in the chapter that refer to decimal levels, and I would hate to lose out, because we made an amendment and didn't make reference to those other places, so I'll be proposing that to you. Construction and demolition noise permits, that entire thing will be underlined, because that's an entirely new provision, and that's what I just discussed with you, it would route through Bob Teener's office. Few other changes, adding second and subsequent offenses as Class B offenses. Right now, noise is just a Class A offense, and so if you're brought before us on any noise violation for a second conviction, then it will be a potential for a Class B, which is, as you know, up to $1,200 and up to 180 days in jail. It also clarifies that abatement procedures are only applicable to those decimal level stationary sources of sound. That's when your code enforcement officers are involved, they go out with the decimal meters, and they basically say, hey, you need to stop this, or you need to modify it. You know, we don't want that to apply to anything except that situation. Police officers shouldn't be limited, they should be able to go out and enforce the law when they need to. And so we're just clarifying what that abatement procedure is limited to. There was some unnecessary language regarding the prosecution process that... There was some unnecessary language regarding the prosecution process that didn't need to be in there, and then also there was a provision for contracting with outside enforcement agencies on noise, which we've never done, and Chief City requested that that be removed. We don't anticipate that we will ever contract with outside enforcement agencies. That basically puts what you currently have in front of you. Now I wanted to discuss with you a couple of potential amendments. I just mentioned the decimal limits and the stationary sources of sound, but the words that are in red, or as maybe otherwise specifically provided in this chapter, I just need to get that in there kind of as a housekeeping measure to pick up a couple of things that aren't involved with stationary sources of sound that are already in the chapter. Now, some of you may remember, at the last council meeting, we had a gentleman here from a hotel and was complaining about some noise arising from an adjacent hub slash restaurant. He was inquiring about the issue of receiving notice if this restaurant were to apply for a noise permit. That had previously been discussed in our numerous meetings over this issue, and was certainly discussed again after the last council meeting. And while it's legally possible to require notice be given to surrounding occupiers of property before permit issues, it's impractical. A lot of folks that'll be applying for these permits are, you know, maybe folks that are having a wedding reception in their backyard, maybe having some amplified music or that sort of thing, and it's going to be very difficult for them to go and determine who lives within up to a 2,500-foot radius around them to give all those folks notice, and it's going to be very cumbersome for staff as well. So since hotels and motels were an issue of concern, we started looking, it was actually an initial suggestion of Charles Lox, about, we decided to look at the noise-sensitive zone. And, you know, after I looked at it for a while, I determined that the way it currently exists is pretty unusable. It creates these noise-sensitive zones in which you're not supposed to create noise within 500 feet of a school, institution of learning, church, hospital, mass care home, or court of law, but it only was from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. And, you know, well, 80% of those things aren't even open during those hours. If you're at a hospital, you're sick 24 hours a day, and, you know, the prohibition really didn't make a whole lot of sense. So I decided to try to make it something workable, usable, viable, as well as considering this hotel motel issue. So we added hotel motel into it, and all of these buildings have to have some outdoor signage to designate them as a school or a hotel, so the average person knows the kind of building they're dealing with. And we're prohibiting the-
Cindy, can I just ask a question? I mean, just to really be specific about this. Suppose we're talking about Heritage Hills. We've got St. Luke's Church on 15th there, so no house within 500 feet of St. Luke's Church could have an outdoor wedding with music?
They can't create a noise disturbance or excessive noise. Now, yes, they could. What this does is that if you fall into the noise-sensitive zone and you make the noise disturbance or excessive noise, then you subject yourself to the possibility of a complaint. It just, what this means is you can't come get a permit to make that kind of noise within that zone.
I mean, we've got the Heritage Association in the middle of Heritage Hills that has outdoor events and weddings and things all the time. I mean, I don't, it's, okay, you answered my question. I mean, I think that's a huge problem.
We did put in the section, shall not apply to any public event facilities located on city-owned or public trust-owned property or the Bricktown Entertainment Area as defined in another section of the code. So that's an option. Yes, it will have difficulties, I'm sure, just the same as the notice issue would have difficulties. And it's certainly a policy decision.
Cindy, in reference to the noise-sensitive zone, church, and the school, is it possible that this could be drafted where, especially if it's a school, I mean, usually there's no school on Saturdays or the weekends, so it wouldn't apply to a weekend setting because there's no school during that time, or in the evening? Is that right?
We have the potential for drafting it with something like during their hours of operation, and that may just be something that staff would have to check on if they found that an entity like this existed within that 500 feet, they may just have to go and find out what their hours of operation are. So we could sure draft in something like that.
And you could certainly, if the council wants to, could keep in the time periods in there like it's currently in. See, the time period is being taken out, is proposed to be taken out. In the ordinance is introduced, all we were doing was adding, after the words residential district, districts there that you can see are crossed out, we were just adding the words after districts, is prohibited from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. That's what's in the ordinance is introduced, this is a possible amendment to it. But you could still keep time periods in there.
Well, answering to Meg's comment, the St. Luke's Church would have to make a complaint. And if they haven't complained on previous occasions, I don't see any much risk in them becoming a complaint if we go forward, but that's just a-
But would, could anybody make a complaint? Wouldn't necessarily have to be the church-
Well, the church is the only one covered by, would be the one covered by this particular section of the ordinance.
Well, if someone made a complaint and said that they're having an event and it's invalidation of this ordinance because it's within 500 feet of the church, it wouldn't necessarily, I don't think, have to be the church-
That's the way I read it.
Okay.
That's the way, I read that as well. It's a noise-sensitive zone because it would be in proximity to a school or church or a hospital or hotel or a motel.
The way it's currently designed or drafted is that anybody could be the complainant. We can certainly limit that. We can put in language limiting the complainant to being one of those entities.
Cindy-
Yes, sir.
On the hours, with what Kenny just said, will there be hour limitations for the event or special permit, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. residential areas or not?
On the noise permits-
Yes.
For residential, it will be from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. For non-residential, 7:00 a.m. to midnight.
On arriving at this 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. residential areas, is that consistent with other localities and communities, that 11:00 p.m. hour?
For most of the things that I saw across the country, it was 11 to midnight, somewhere We could either keep an hour limitation in, which to me is fairly unworkable, because, I shouldn't say unworkable, it just doesn't make any sense, because most of these places that are listed in this are closed during the hours that are currently listed, so they're not impacted whatsoever. You know, we could draft it up where it said that the noise is prohibited during their hours of operation, and then staff would need to find out, or we would have to require the applicant, the noise permit applicant, to find out what the hours of operation are.
I think one establishment that was overlooked, or maybe wasn't intended, but you have nursing homes that's in some areas-
That's in mass care homes, is the way we interpreted it.
But that's 24 hours of service.
Uh huh.
So I'm just kind of wondering, how do you put a time range on when you have a nursing home that you have people who may need care or being attended to, you know, all times of night?
Absolutely, so it would be a 24-hour prohibition against permits.
So that means that the Zoo Amphitheater-
Well, there's the public event facilities amendment there at the end, located on city-owned or public trust-owned property.
This is only a potential amendment, the current provision is on page eight of your ordinance. You can see what the current wording is.
No, that's how it would look if the amendments were to take effect, Kenny?
Yeah, right.
So, you know, and we don't have to do any of this, a lot of this was at the impetus of the gentleman that showed up a couple of weeks ago. We were asked to look at this issue, it's extremely complicated, and to craft it around all of the various concerns around the city would be very, very difficult.
And the only change that you're proposing is, I understand, significant changes. You're adding hotel and motel and taking out the time restriction. These other institutions have been covered under this ordinance as it exists right now.
That's correct.
And so we're not increasing the rigidity of our enforcement, except adding hotel motels and taking out the time restraints.
Correct.
And the time restraints were from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. And as Councilman Kelly points out, and as you pointed out to me, the hospitals, convalescent hospitals, mass care homes, are all 24/7 operations, and so they should be covered all the time.
My only problem with a lot of this is that there are areas where it's known, it's open, that they are, you know, entertainment, you know, for practical purposes districts. And I'm aware of several up on the north part of Oklahoma City in which, you know, the establishments came, they developed, they created a business that is lawful, they have music that's played sometimes out on the patio, and then another business moves in, and then they want to complain about the noise. To me, it's kind of like you build a house next to a railroad track, but the railroad track has been there for 50 years, and the train has been coming down the track for 50 years, and now you're complaining about the noise of the railroad track, of the train. And I just think that, you know, we can't legislate everything. I think that some of this is just going to a point where, you know, you're going to allow some people to have and do whatever they want to do because they own a public trust or a government property, and then the poor person, or I said poor person, the person that's owned private property that he owns that, you know, has been, you know, a business that, part of his business is having outdoor, you know, events, that, to me, it's kind of like, okay, you're cut out of the equation because you're not on a government property and you're not on a public trust, and if you own any one of those facilities, you could do whatever you wanted to do, as loud as you wanted to do it. And I just think that maybe we may be going a little bit too far with fairness here, I don't know, it's... And what's the citation if a violation of this, what is the proposed financial?
The first offense is a Class A, and if the amendment goes through, the second or subsequent offenses would be Class Bs.
So that's if I'm, if that's $500 the first time and it goes to $1,250?
Up to $500 for the first offense, no jail time. Second and subsequent convictions could be up to $1,200 and/or 180 days in jail.
I'm just, I don't, I'm a teeny bit concerned, I need to do some more work on this, but I'm a teeny bit concerned that we are stepping again into solving a single-purpose problem with a gigantic citywide fix.
Well, this is just a public hearing, so we don't have to make that determination for two weeks, we have a chance to vote on it in two weeks.
And you potentially could, on the noise-sensitive zone definition there, there might be some distinction between, say, a school, institution of learning, or a church, and a court on hours, because, I mean, schools and the churches and the institution of learning usually aren't in operation between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., whereas, as Councilman Kelly pointed out, the convalescent hospital or mass care home or hospital, they're 24-hour operations. So you might be able to allow for the, except the noise permit to be granted for, say, within 500 feet of schools, institutions of learning, churches, or courts of law, like between the 10:00 p.m. and, or, between, excuse me, 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. at night. So you could, probably couldn't make some distinction there.
We could do that, or we could look at no permits during the hours of their operation, limiting the complainant to being representatives of those entities. So if the hospital didn't want to complain, or the church didn't want to complain, then nobody else could. Those are a couple of things that we could do with that.
Just for a question of procedural issues, hypothetical, a person that's safe instance the ordinance is, as it's drafted, and a complaint is made, and an officer arrives on the scene, the officer issues the individual a citation, but if the individual continues to do the same thing, they just get another citation right there?
If he continues to create the noise-
Yes. So it doesn't stop the activity?
If an officer believes, under the police manual, even for Class A offense, an officer believes that there's going to be a continuing violation of law, if there's going to be a disruption, if there's going to be violence, then the individual could be arrested.
Well, you know what was interesting, about three weeks ago, there was an article in the newspaper, and it was in reference to a concert at the Zoo Amphitheater, and one of the performers basically just turned his nose up to the whole issue of the noise violation and stated that, you know, they were going to continue their performance, and they would just pay whatever they had to pay as far as the fine. So it sounds like that, you know, this is, I don't know, it, I don't see where we're going to make a whole lot of difference in reference to what we already have as far as the noise permits that we already operate, I mean, the ordinance that we already operate. I mean, I admire the work that you've put into this at the request of the citizen, but this is a lot of work, and I just wonder, you know, if we're going to get what we're trying to satisfy as far as, you know, one particular issue.
Well, Councilman, it is certainly council's decision, we just tried to accommodate by presenting some language to council for their consideration based upon our instructions from the last council meeting, and it is absolutely up to council, you know, this was certainly discussed in many of the meetings that we had in the past year about requiring notice and that sort of thing, and from a management sort of perspective of the folks that were there at the meetings, it was, we saw nothing but difficulty. So you're right, this is some drafting on the fly in the last couple of weeks, trying to figure out what the issues are, and, you know, we can make some changes, but it's absolutely up to y'all about how you want to proceed with that.
This is, the noise zone provision has been in there a long time, and it was designed to protect certain facilities from adverse impact on noise. And I think if we limited the complaints, or a complaint on the noise to somebody who was actually in one of these institutions, then we've solved the problem with those people who have been adversely affected by noise and not the neighbors who just were there, we're protecting a specific class of customers. we're protecting a specific class of customers, citizens. And I think if we limited the complaint ability to just that class, that group of citizens, we've done a lot then to limit the concerns, I think, that both Councilman Kelly and Councilman Salier have. Yeah, Larry?
Having been involved in these discussions, what do you see, and correct me if I'm wrong, Cindy, if I'm misstating this, and Bill Citi I see back here also, we have on the books right now, whether we like it or not, certain provisions dealing with this whole subject of noise. And we've empowered, or tried to empower, people from development services, the development center, to enforce these. We've also had the police involved in enforcing these. We've also had the municipal councillor's office involved in prosecuting these. And what we've got is kind of a klued system right now, and the whole intent was to try to come up with a way that if we want to, if we want to have some noise ordinances on the books, to make them clear to the people who are, who will be either creating the noise or complaining against the noise, to make it clear to the people who we're tasking to go out and enforce these ordinances, and to make it clear to the people who have the responsibility of prosecuting these, of doing this. And so one solution, quite frankly, Cindy, is to take all the noise ordinances off the books. That would solve the problem as far as a lot of this confusion. But the things that are in here right now are a fact, like this noise-sensitive zone, if I'd have given, if I'd have taken a quiz and said, is there anything called a noise-sensitive zone in Oklahoma City? I'd say, you've got to be kidding. But yet, it's in the current ordinance.
That's correct.
And so that's what we're trying to do here, is figure out a way, what do we want to do? And it gets confusing to the fact that, as Cindy said earlier, these infractions, if you will, don't come eight to five. They come when you're seated at a swimming pool in Frisco, Texas, on a Saturday afternoon, and your cellphone rings, and the neighbor is saying, well, there's a car show going on at a location on Northwest 10th Street, and they're playing music that I can hear three blocks away in the middle of Saturday afternoon, and it's ruining my quality of life. And nobody knows, okay, what do you do? And this is an attempt to try to get a structure down. In this particular case, the operator of the car show had a noise permit and was operating within there, but there are certain, so there's confusion in here, and this was just an attempt to figure out, do we want to clear up any of the confusion? And I guess what happened, the more confusion we tried to clear up, maybe the more confusion we created, okay? And so that's kind of where we are, so.
Council, I'm going to limit that to just this section. I think the rest of the work's really great.
Okay.
How about, how about I work at a couple of the suggestions here and email the language out to you, and you'll be able to look at that then before the final hearing?
Yeah, because I think the Council Mcatee's point was well-taken. We had some real problems with this ordinance as it was written. It was difficult to enforce, and the cleanup efforts were important. I claim responsibility, or accept responsibility, I guess, for the motel hotel thing because it was a concern of one of my constituents. And I think putting it in the, in this noise-sensitive area protects him from the adverse economic impacts of people leaving his hotel in the middle of the night because of noise in the adjacent area. And so I just think that it was a good step, and I think the whole effort's been good. We'll have a chance in the next couple of weeks to look at some further revisions and have an opportunity to vote on it September 28.
Mayor, comments? But since we have the chief here, can we at least, because we may not get this chance again, can we at least have some input from the chief as it relates to this whole issue of noise? Input from the chief is always important. Thank you.
I think everybody's attempted to do a really good job of trying to explain what the issues are, and I think Council Mcatee kind of explains some of the, over the past year, two years or so, makes it very difficult in situations like that, and trying to determine who really does have a valid complaint, because we do, we receive noise complaints all the time, and the officers are having to deal with those complaints. And the reality is, is that nobody really has to have a permit to go out and make noise and have a party in their backyard, but if they don't have, if they don't have a noise permit and we get a complaint, then they're subject to a violation. Neighbor says it's too loud. Normally, what we do in the police department is we warn individuals first, or even if it's a business, we'll go and say, listen, we're getting some complaints, you're going to have to hold it down. And then if it continues, and if they were not to have a noise complaint, then we'd allow the complaining party to sign the complaint. You know, with some type of, I mean, making sense, some, of some way of the noise, the noise permit really gives the, gives at least law enforcement and the officers some specific criteria as to how to enforce that. And there are boundaries, and if you do have, if you're going to have, if you're going to create the noise that's going to extend beyond a certain, a certain boundary, then here's what you have to comply with, and the officers have a, you know, a benchmark to go by when, when dealing with that noise. Now, in most cases, even if they have a noise permit and they get some complaints, they're still going to make, they're still going to try to determine whether or not it's outside the boundaries of where the noise permit was, you know, was allotted, or whether or not, even then, ask them, you know, if they could hold it down some. So it just, it's basically an attempt to do that. Now, the parking lots, we're seeing a lot more of clubs that initially they go in, have a parking lot, there's no design, or there never was any prediction that they were going to have parties outside the confines of their walls. And I think people move in, hotels move in, people move into those areas and build their businesses, thinking, well, that's fine, we wouldn't mind being next to a bar and a club that's going to be there late at night or 2:00 in the morning, but they don't expect it to be outside in creating those types of disturbances. And I think that, in many cases, that's probably reasonable for them to have that type of expectation. So in many cases, like we're seeing, like Council Mcatee had talked about, and now we're seeing up at, on Memorial, is they've decided it's a money-making thing, and a lot of them are deciding to move their operations outside during the summertime, and it's creating a lot of problems for areas that, you know, expected some type of peace and quiet around that area. So I'm not sure it's not a legitimate expectation for a hotel that's built there to think that that club's going to be inside their walls.
Well, maybe we need to change our ordinances as it relates to the clubs themselves as far as their establishment, that the activities that the, for the business is inside of the establishment. I mean.
Right, and I mean, again, they can have, I mean, in many cases, they can, they can have, they can have things, and if they have a patio or something like that, in most cases, it's pretty reasonable. It's not, it's not too loud, it doesn't really create a problem. But when they fill up a parking lot, now you've got 200 or 300 people, and you've put sand in it, and you're serving beer, and people get, you know, it's hard to keep people within the confines of the parking lot, and they end up in the hotel, and it's just, you know, makes them, but then you get into other offenses and other issues besides just noise. But again, they don't have to have a permit to do that. They can put the sand in their parking lot, and they can have a party, and they can have a band, but they're going to be subject to be cited, to being cited, you know, for complaints of a noise violation. So it's difficult, it's very difficult to draft.
Thank you, Chief, but, you know, I can see where that could be a potential problem for not just the residents, but for law enforcement. And, you know, I think maybe we ought to look at some of the issues as it relates to the physical structure and the business inside those establishments as far as, if you're going to have a club, then if you got, you have a zoning, you have a permit to have an inside business, then, you know, to take the business out in the parking lot, to me, there should be an ordinance that prohibits that altogether, you know? I can understand the Bricktown situation as it relates to when the permits are granted for closing off the streets downtown, but when you have a business that is permitted to have an inside in the four walls of that business, I just can't see why we'd continue to allow then, or even maybe we need to address that issue with an ordinance that prohibits the alcohol from being taken outside in the parking lot and basically creating another club in the parking lot.
Councilman, we're actually looking into a lot of those issues currently, and there's a lot of state preemption in the areas of alcohol and beer, so we are currently looking at that issue.
Yeah, are there any other comments or concerns, questions? I'll send these here. Cindy, thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you, sir.
It's not been easy, I can tell.
Let's put a little more gray in the hair.
Okay, that was a public hearing on the noise ordinance. We're moving now to a public hearing. This is a, okay, we're moving seconds to the public hearing. I second it, all those are ready to cast your votes, and the public hearing's approved, I guess. We have now a public hearing on, this is one that Councilman Kelly sponsored.
Russell is here to, if not, this is a, an amendment to 23rd Street overlay as it relates to small engine repair, and as it, this particular issue goes to a lot of the problems that has existed in the area for a long period of time, and that is automotive shops that are basically creating a nuisance by doing work on the sidewalks outside and not being totally enclosed. And so in order to try to move forward with the redevelopment in the commercial district of Northeast 23rd Street, we have asked staff to look at this issue and to see what could be done in order to get a firm control over these type of businesses that you, under the present ordinance, there's just no way that they could go in and enforce the issue as to what type of work was being done. And so, you know, we have had reports from, from the code enforcement that shows that, you know, some of these people are saying that they're doing one type of business when in fact it is, it is something totally different. They may start out as a car wash and turns into, you know, removing engines and leaving them out on the sidewalk, and it has become just a complete, you know, pedestrian problem. And so the redrafting of the amendment as it stands now would eliminate any type of automotive shops from being established in the 23rd Street quarter as far as the overlay is concerned.
Councilman, I don't really have anything to add to that. I mean, I did talk about this last week in terms of what the intent was, I think you've captured that, so be happy to answer any questions.
Well, is, is I understand what Councilman Kelly said, prohibit any kind of automobile repair shop in this overlay district?
We had previously in the overlay prohibited the heavy auto repair, and this now takes out the light auto repair.
So you couldn't open a Goodyear store or a Firestone store that offered automobile service?
Yes, that's correct.
And you couldn't have a service station that offered anything other than gasoline?
I believe so.
Okay.
I mean, it does prohibit things like auto car washes as well.
So you couldn't have a quick lube come in here?
No.
Okay.
And if one was to look at the area now, there is a multitude of basically everything that you would need as far as auto repair as it stands now. And these are the type of businesses that has been a complete deterrent to new growth and new economic development in the area. And the concerns has been from the business people who are there, and when you drive the area, it's, it's, it's pretty blighted in some areas as it relates to the automotive shops that are there. And at the present time, in order to try to get some control as it relates to moving in or directing new development there, this is one way, I think, that we can address that issue. And I have talked to some of the individuals, and I just had a meeting last, last week with an individual that owns a lot of property on Northeast 23rd Street, has been very resistant in reference to some of the new overlay issues, but he called me and he told me, he said, you know, I moved my fence, have you drove by lately, it's down. And this was a, you know, almost a half a block area that was just fenced with a old metal fence that he had just been totally resistant to, to removing. But he now realized that development that is coming to the area and some of the concerns and the potential discussions that has been right now, this occurring as it relates to some major new development on Northeast 23rd Street, he realizes that this is necessary in order to bring in new development, and it's going to increase the property value of those individuals who presently have property there and the businesses that have moved in. They know that this is going to create a sustainable, you know, development for the investment they have made in the area.
So this would require existing facilities to be removed and prohibit any new facilities that were light automotive or heavy automotive?
I didn't, I didn't understand your question.
You would do two things, Councilman Kelly. It would prohibit this thing, would cause those who exist now to be shut down?
No, that.
No, no, no.
Those are grandfathered in.
Okay, those would be, all these things that objectionable could be continued here.
Right.
But you would prohibit anything that was new and improved, better coming in.
Correct.
Right.
I'm not sure I understand the logic of that, but we're going to have to vote on it for two weeks, I'll have a chance to get it through my mind, but.
Drive the area, you'll see.
Well, no, but I think, what we're prohibiting is facilities that exist in very nice commercial areas all over the city. If you go up and down May Avenue, North May Avenue, north of 122nd, and there's, there's quickly facilities, there's Firestone, a Goodyear store, that are attractive and a benefit. You're prohibiting those kind of operations while you're allowing to exist the very kind of things that you think are causing a problem. I don't see the logic of that. We can talk about that.
The logic, the logic is then, why, why is it 23rd Street like May Avenue?
Well, because you've got all these facilities here that will continue to exist, and you're prohibiting the development in good way.
And in order to get rid of, in order to bring in new developments, you've got to get rid of, you know, work on, you know, getting rid of the old ones.
But this ordinance doesn't, doesn't anything do with the old ones?
Well, I guarantee you that what we have done so far with the 23rd Street overlay, it has created a, a difference in reference to the growth and development.
I don't want to argue about that at all, Skip. I'm just trying to understand what this ordinance does, and I don't think I really understand the logic behind it.
This, this is just the 23rd Street overlay.
Right.
Yeah, and the legal nonconforming use, whenever you enact a new prohibition in the zoning code, normally, just the standard general rule is that the legal nonconforming use applies, so that uses that were lawful when they were established can continue until they're discontinued.
That's what I thought.
Right.
Okay, this is, this is a public hearing, and we have an opportunity to vote on it in two weeks, so we need a motion to approve the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, please cast your votes, and the public hearing's approved. Okay, items from council, Skip, do you have anything else?
No.
Meg? Pete?
No.
Larry?
Real quick, tonight is Neighborhood Night Out, and a number of the neighborhoods will be holding functions. I'd like to encourage those in the West Watch area, Greenville, and Windsor Forest to attend their functions. And then in the paper today, there was a article on the River Park, they did theirs on Saturday afternoon, had over 300 people in attendance, it was a great event, so my congratulations to Tommy Hay, to Gina Daniel, and the other folks in River Park for another great event. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just make a few comments and a recommendation as it relates to the manager's report on animal shelter. Catherine English is here, and I want to commend you, Catherine, in the time since we asked you to do this. This is a very extensive and comprehensive look at what we've done and are trying to do in the past five years. In fact, it's quite a bit to digest just in the first reading, so I took a couple of readings, and from that, would like to make of readings, and from that, would like to make a couple of comments and then, again, a recommendation. In the report, we talk about the live release rate in calendar year 2009. It's 40%, and our goal for 2010 is 52%. Live release rate, meaning those animals that come into the shelter, returned to owner, they're adopted, or they're transferred to other facilities. And the 60%, would be those animals, percent of animals approximately euthanized. In the live release rate in the past couple of years, we have really gained some progress, and I think in particular with respect to the new partnership, Mission Orange, with the Oklahoma Humane Society, in regards to adoption. But no question about it, in what we've been able to accomplish and continuing success in that area. I think, however, we, and I don't think, we can't think that we're going to adopt our way out of euthanasia. In the report, mentioned on third page, is another proposal that continues to be of concern to many stakeholders, is the passage of a mandatory spay-neuter ordinance for Oklahoma City. Supporters strongly believe that requiring dogs and cats to be sterilized with few exceptions will reduce shelter intake over time. And I just want to call attention to our national standard from the American Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, that nationwide, their statement is that per capita shelter intake and euthanasia have been in a steady decline for the past several decades. And research indicates the main reason for this decline is the increasing evidence, incidence of spay and neutering animals. It's qualified, I mean, they qualify that by saying that the real efficiency and success has come through the voluntary sterilization, and the jury is still out on the full-blown, the idea of full-blown mandatory spay and neutering across the city. What I'd like to suggest and ask as a first step, because any, any effort to look citywide at any even first step, spay and neutering on a mandatory basis, is going to be a question of cost and a question of enforcement. And I think there's a way incrementally to address this and really begin to take that next step like we're done with adoption, and aggressively moving forward with a spay and neutering option. And what I'm, what I'm asking is that the Animal Welfare Department and our legal people take a look in developing a mandatory spay and neuter ordinance in Oklahoma City. And the first step would be, the step would be at little additional cost to the city because enforcement would be carried out only on an encounter basis. Be required, the ordinance would have to require it, see why, but as we do in most of our code enforcement practice in Oklahoma City, is by a complaint basis. This would be on an encounter basis. For instance, animal welfare enforcement officer gets a call on a mean dog or loose dog and makes, goes out and makes a contact with the pet owner. In this, in this way of requiring spay and neutering on such encounters, where we're already out there in the field, it's ascertained at that time if the animal is sterilized or not. If there's no proof, the owner is then cited and would be given, it varies in different communities, is given X number of days to comply. Either show proof, get the, get the animal sterilized, show proof, and then at that point the fine is dismissed. At that same, at that same point of contact, that animal welfare office could make available through the pet owner, there's reduced options, opportunities in the city that other organizations operate. Best Friends is one that we work with, Spot Clinic is another. They do exclusively spay and neuter at low cost or very reduced cost. Just to give you an idea, one of the clinics, Spot Clinic, has been averaging the last couple of years 7,000 spay and neuter a year. So, we have some partner capability to assist us with this when we come to that, to that point. I would just like us to look in, again, to that first step, citywide, of a spay and neuter ordinance that would be enforced on an encounter basis. And that's going to take, I know some, some time to do that. I'm not suggesting any particular time. But what we, what we do know, in all our pure cities, there's some kind of spay and neuter ordinance. Tulsa, Lauton, I think Lauton's having even more success than Tulsa with regards to a mandatory spay and neuter. But this wouldn't even attempt to embrace those ordinance. It would be looking at a first-step ordinance on an encounter basis. I just think, when we're still, even with our good aggressive efforts in adoption, when we're still needing to put down our other foot in regards to spay and neuter, it's going to have to get more aggressive than just talking about it. So, that is my recommendation and request of staff, city managers, to just take a look at that first step.
With a brader exception. Sam? Councilman, as we talked yesterday about with a brader exception?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. All the exceptions. All the bridges. Yes.
Gary? Okay, city manager reports.
I think Councilman Bowen very adequately covered the report on the animal shelter, and so I'd be happy to answer any questions on the other reports.
Are there any questions, the city manager? Hey, citizens to be heard. We have one person signed up, Clyde Madden.
Clyde Madden, 1225 North K, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73117. Vice Mayor Ryan. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm opposed to the ordinance, the panel handling ordinance by Councilwoman Sonia. A lot of people aren't out of job and can't work, Councilman Kelly. And therefore, I don't think it's good practice to keep them from asking for help. And also, I don't think the Attorney Office is fair and just in handling the case coming up, December 6th pertaining to the pharmacy who killed a little boy in a stormy storm. I've written the Attorney General asking for a new prosecutor for that case.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Madden. Are there any other comments? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.